All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 8, 2025 Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. And we'll first, we'll start out with a moment of silence, and I have, I have two. First, I'll start out with Jesse James Stillman. It is with profound sorrow that the family announced the passing of Jesse James Stillman, a deeply cherished family man and devoted registered nurse who departed this life on April 1st, 2025, at the age of 36. His family owns, if you don't know, the family owns Treasure Cove. They're from Blue Lakes, longtime family out in Upper Lake and Blue Lakes. I went to school with their son, their oldest, Peter Stillman, and their oldest son Jimmy is, he runs the Treasure Cove. He was my old boss, and I remember Jesse as a young man, little boy, wearing a cowboy hat, coming into Treasure Cove all the time. And so just, this is really sad for the family. He leaves behind both of his parents, Jim and Natasha Stillman, and his brothers and sisters. He's preceded in death by his brother Frank Chandler Stillman, his grandparents Nadia Ranson, Elsie Stillman, Vasily Granchukov, and he is survived by his wife Regina Stillman, his beloved children Landon, Nadia, and Svetlana, his parents James and Natasha Stillman, his siblings Mike, his wife Teresa, Jimmy, his wife Carrie, Peter, his wife Vicki, Billy, his wife Jessica, and other many nieces and nephews and extended family members of all whom mourn his passing and celebrate the love and legacy he leaves behind. A memorial service will be held on April 13, 2:30 PM at the North Shore Christian Fellowship with the reception following at the niece event center to honor Jesse's life and service, devotion, and love. So that's, that's my first moment of silence. The second is Richard Stewart of Elam, elder Native American. He was really instrumental in the early days of Lake County Tribal Health. If you probably know the band called Twice Is Good, him and his son are a duet that they play a lot of blues. They played everywhere. They played even at my campaign and, and parties and things like that that we've had and play a lot for the elders in the local community and everywhere in Lake Mendocino and Bay Area, everywhere. They're all over the place. And so Rich was, you know, a really renowned man, and it's unfortunate for his passing, and we send our condolences to his family as well. That's my moments of silence. Anybody else? All right. All right. Supervisor Pisgah, can you read us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
We have no extra items.
No extra items. There we go. Approval of the consent agenda. As you know, consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial. They usually are passed in one motion and, but often they can also be pulled for further discussion, questions, or anything of the like, not only by the board, but the citizens as well. So if there's any items to be pulled from the consent agenda, which I have one, 5.15, just for a question or two. And is there anyone else from the board? Anyone from the public would like to pull anything from the consent agenda item, or the consent agenda, sorry? Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of 5.15, I think it was?
Yeah.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. Let's see, we have our 902 public input. So if you have, anyone from the public wants to come up and speak for three minutes about an item that is not covered on the agenda, please?
Roseanne.
Are we? Roseanne. So. Oh, looks like it's back. No, it's back over there, but it's not here.
Very long moment of silence.
You want to take a break? All right, so we'll take a five-minute break. 10?
Five.
Five-minute break, we'll be back at 9:10. We're ready to move forward?
It was a group of artists.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we have video as well. All right, so we're back at public input. As mentioned before, if there's an item that is not on the agenda and you'd like to come up and speak for three minutes, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and also fill out a document. Just know that if you, if we hear something that we can't necessarily address it as we are in person, we have to just allow you to say it, keep it on record, and then we'll reach out to you later and, and address it. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Morrow. I'm the Executive Director for Lake Family Resource Center. On behalf of our Board of Directors, of which your colleague Carlos Torres is a member of our board, our staff and the clients we serve, we appreciate this opportunity to speak with you today. April, excuse me, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time for communities across the nation to unite, I'm so sorry, to unite in acknowledging the reality of sexual violence and reaffirming our commitment to prevention, healing, and justice for survivors. At Lake Family Resource Center, we are at the front lines of this issue every single day. We provide crisis intervention, therapy, legal advocacy, shelter, and prevention education to individuals and families impacted by sexual assault and domestic violence. Our work is informed by decades of research, community engagement, and most importantly, the lived experiences of survivors. It is with this perspective that I must express deep concern over the 2025 White House proclamation on Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This year's proclamation falsely claims that increases in sexual violence are primarily driven by border and immigration policies. That statement is not only misleading, it is harmful. It shifts the focus away from the true nature of sexual violence, promoting a narrative that is unsupported by data, rooted in fear, and politics. The reality is clear, and the data speaks for itself. According to a 2023 analysis by the Department of Justice, 38% of sexual assault perpetrators are acquaintances, 34% are intimate partners, 6% are relatives, and only 7% to 10% are strangers. These numbers highlight a painful but important truth: The vast majority of sexual violence is committed by someone the victim knows, not by strangers, and not as a result of immigration policy. We cannot afford to allow misinformation to shape public understanding or influence policy. Survivors deserve honesty, they deserve support, they deserve leadership that centers their safety and dignity, not one that weaponizes their trauma to push political agendas. As we observe Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I ask this board to continue supporting Lake Family Resource Center and the evidence-based survivor-centered work we do every day. I ask you to stand with us in rejecting misinformation and reaffirming our shared commitment to prevention, healing, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Is there any other public input? Any on Zoom? All right, we'll close public input. Very well said. Next, we have our Pet of the Week, and yeah, yeah. This, he is a good-looking fellow, or this boy?
Girl.
Girl. See? I'm all messed up.
Oh, you're good.
Sorry.
You're good. So this is Alma. She's a two-year-old husky. She's already spayed, so her adoption fee is a lot lower than it usually is. She's a very independent husky, as you can see. She likes to get love where she can. She does get along with other dogs, so we haven't had a problem with her doing meet-and-greets at the shelter. And she's a little higher energy out of the gate, but then after that, she's perfectly fine, so. As she, she wants to walk around.
Don't look into her eyes.
One of them's blue. One of the eyes is blue. It's pretty cool.
You'll be mesmerized, and then you'll take her home. All right. I'll let her keep moving her through the room, but we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. And so 6.3 is our National Poetry Month Home of the Week. All right, come on up.
Good morning. I am Brenda Marie Jaeger. I am the poet laureate of Lake County right now. For anyone who doesn't know, a poet laureate is a poet in the community who serves by advocating for poetry. If anyone in any of your services would like to bring writing into your services, to your clients, please let me know. I'm always happy to come and help bring the healing power of poetry and of writing to anyone and everyone in the community. And today, to start, I just wanted to invite everyone happy National Poetry Month, and I wanted to bring everyone's awareness to the fact that this Thursday is Poem in Your Pocket Day, and 4,000 little poetry scrolls, excuse me, are going to be available in little baskets like this at libraries, senior centers. They're in a bunch of coffee shops as well, so go to your favorite coffee shop, to Angelina's, to Jimmy's, people, they're for free. And the Friends of the Library and the Lake County Literacy Coalition very generously sponsored all of these poetry scrolls. There are 10 different scrolls, so come back for more. You can collect all 10. And I chose for the poem that I'm going to read today, one of the poems that is one of the scrolls that's available. So this poem is by Ada Limon, who is the U.S. poet laureate right now. And I chose this one as one of our scrolls this year because we're entering the 10-year anniversary of the Valley Fire. And I, this is a poem where she is from Sonoma County, Ada Limon is from Sonoma County, and she had to face in her own community the same kind of loss, trauma, and growth and insight that we have all experienced through that. There's something so magical that happens in the midst of that kind of group trauma, where we enter the human family together and feel our commonality and our vulnerability together. And that's one of, thank you so much for having me here and for supporting poetry to always remind us of those realities. So this is Salvage by Ada Limon. On top of Mount Piska, on the western slope of the Maya Camas, there's a madron tree that's half burned from the fires, half alive from nature's need to propagate. One side of her is black ash, and at her root is what looks like a cavity that was hollowed out by flame. On the other side, silvery-green broadleaf shoots ascend toward the winter light, and her bark is a cross between a bayhorse and a chestnut horse, red and velvety, like the animal's neck she resembles. I have been staring at the tree for a long time now. I am reminded of the righteousness I had before the scorch of time. I miss who I was. I miss who we all were before we were this, half alive to the brightening sky, half dead already. I place my hand on the unscarred bark that is cool and unsullied, and because I cannot apologize to the tree, to my own self, I say, I am sorry. I am sorry I have been so reckless with your life. That's Ada Limon. She is a very prolific eco-poet as well, so she's always addressing our relationship to the natural world, how to care for each other as a human family and the world around us. So I do have a gift for each of you, if I can indulge one more moment. I just put together, these are, there are 10, okay, there's 10, oh, okay. These are just little gift bags of the poetry scrolls that are going to be available, and you all have one of each poem, so the collection of 10 each of you have.
Is it okay if I share these on my pages?
Yes, of course, please, yes. And Poem in Your Pocket Day, it's a day to take a poem, read it to a friend, read it to a loved one, post it up at the water cooler, and share it on social media if you want to take a video of yourself reading it. There's a hashtag, #pocketpoem. It is a project of the Academy of American Poets, and people celebrate it all around the world. So Lake County is participating in an international celebration, and it is this Thursday, Thursday the 10th, and that's when the scrolls will become available. There'll be a basket here in the lobby. Oh, for the court, and there's the sign for the courthouse.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Happy National Poetry Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
Is there any public input? On Zoom? All right, bring it back to the board. Thank you for that. It was a really good poem. 6.4 Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2025 as Celebrate Diversity Month. Supervisor Pisgah will be reading this proclamation. And if you're here for this, please come up.
This proclamation is brought to us by Health Services, so anyone from Health Services, anyone who feels... Yeah, come on up!
Yes. You can go all the way there, wherever you want.
Come on up and join us. This, this time is welcome, everyone is welcome. Thank you. Everyone's welcome.
Oh, just, please come join us because diversity includes everyone.
We can scoot this way, yeah.
You guys can come up scooting this way, spreading out.
There's room for everyone. That's right. All right, this is a beautiful representation. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2025 as Celebrate Diversity Month in Lake County. Whereas Celebrate Diversity Month has been observed each April since 2004, honoring the contributions by individuals of every gender, race, ethnicity, faith, sexual orientation, gender identity, and ability, among many other distinguishing factors, and recognizing the intersectionality. And whereas, appreciating diversity encourages inclusivity and creates a more welcoming environment for people from all backgrounds and circumstances. And whereas, celebrating diversity promotes understanding and tolerance, and by learning about different cultures and experiences, individuals can gain greater understanding of the challenges and struggles faced by people from different backgrounds. And whereas, embracing diversity helps combat discrimination, racism, and other constructs that seed division, by creating awareness of the importance of accepting and valuing people from differing backgrounds. And whereas, when people celebrate their differences and are open to diversity, common stereotypes are challenged, promoting a more nuanced and complex understanding of different cultures and backgrounds, and they can highlight the diversity within different communities, showcasing unique and unappreciated strengths and talents. Whereas, by bringing people from different backgrounds and experiences together, diversity fosters creativity and innovation, leading to new ideas, perspectives, and solutions to problems. And whereas, celebrating diversity enhances public growth and encourages greater empathy and compassion for others. And whereas, the richly diverse cultures of Lake County's seven tribal nations, Middletown Ranteria of Pomo Indians of California, Coi Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scots Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habamatol Pomo of Upper Lake, Robinson Ranteria of Pomo Indians of California, and Elam Indian Colony greatly enhance every facet of life in our communities. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors and the County of Lake recognizes the month of April 2025 as Celebrate Diversity Month, passed and adopted this eighth day of April 2025, signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, E.J. Crandall.
Hello. Hi, everyone. I'm Leila Romero. I am your Health Services Health Equity Coordinator, and I'm so proud to serve this community and to try and reduce health disparities that are being experienced here. And so I just wanted to share and express with everyone that, you know, diversity isn't just about race or ethnicity. It's no two people have the same experiences and same perception of anything, so that's diversity right there. That's diversity of thought. And so thank you so much, thank you for everyone for coming up here and supporting this proclamation, and hope to see you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Anyone here?
Do, yeah, there we go. So thank you for reading this, and Leila, I think you wrote it right. Yes, of course. And so appreciate that. I just wanted to highlight that so everyone knew. And so just, you know, when I served in the Army, went to different countries, visited different people, well, you know, not visiting, but you know, was around a lot of different people from different countries and cultures. And after you learn how other nationalities deal with things, you can relate it to how we deal with things. So culture is, is very, is very special because we all have the same feelings, we all have the same types of relationships, it's just done in a little, a different way. And so once, once we all start embracing that, it just becomes really appreciative. And so I've been able to, to visit with many different people and learn how similar it is, not only to our culture in America, but also my culture from the tribes. So it's just, you know, I enjoy doing these proclamations, I enjoy everyone coming forward and, and being a part of this, and looking at it from, you know, just a whole overall global, you know, spectrum. So again, everybody, thank you for coming here, and thank you for being a part of this county and being a part of each other.
So I appreciate this. Oh, did I interrupt someone else?
We have a speaker.
Please.
The liberty and justice for all, which comes from the highest law in our land, is preached in our country but not practiced very well. And that's unfortunately why DEI laws and rules are needed, badly needed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to say something before we go back to the board? I just appreciate you all coming, this is, oh.
My name is Raven Shepherd with Lake County Behavioral Health. I'm the cultural chair for Lake County Behavioral Health. Yeah, it's, it's amazing. It's an honor to be working. I think it's off. As a therapist, a cultural chair, substance use counselor, I hold that license as well. But to take it out into our communities and help all walks of life is what I think Lake County stands for, and it shows by the amount of people that got up and came up here. We're all here. We all feel safe, we feel brave, we feel honored when we're all together as one. And it's, it's awesome to see all the multicultural peoples here, including our native people. We have seven beautiful tribes around the lake, and to have people represent is, is amazing, so I'm glad to be here today. Thank you.
So I just want to share appreciation. I think diversity is important. We need to hear different perspectives, lived experiences, to better understand how to move forward, and we need to make sure everybody has the same opportunity to take the lead in leading us forward or participating in leading us forward. And it's days like this that I'm reminded of some of sociology classes that I took in college where we, diversity is not just differences between cultures, differences between countries. There is more difference within a group than there is between groups. We all have things that we all aspire for our families, for our communities, that are very similar. There's so much diversity all around us. It's not just between, it's also within, and I think that we need to always be open to all of that because the more we hear, the more we learn, the better off we're going to be.
I just want to thank and appreciate everyone for being here, supporting the diversity in our county. Thank you.
Anybody in the public? All right, Sam. Okay. All right. Thank you for that proclamation. We'll move on to our next proclamation, which is our 6.5 Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of April 7 through 13, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Lake County. And Vice Chair Rasmussen will be reading this. Anyone who is here for this item, please come up as well.
Anyone who is here for this item, please come up as well.
Thank you.
Got everybody? What was that? A proclamation designating the week of April 7th through 13th, 2025 as National Public Health Week in Lake County. Whereas the week of April 7th, 2025 is National Public Health Week and the theme is it starts here, highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and country. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations in the United States continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared with the entire population of the United States. And a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to differences in the belt environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare. Whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers and the public on issues that are important to improving the health of the people of the United States and the public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats ranging from infectious disease, outbreaks, to natural disaster preparedness. And whereas Lake County Health Services seeks to promote policies, systems, and services that promote optimal health and remove systemic barriers that result in health inequities and strives to address the health disparities experienced by rural communities as a whole. And whereas the Administration Division supports each Health Services Department program in its mission to promote and protect the well-being of local residents. And the Environmental Health Division enhances public health in Lake County through education, enforcing safety standards, and promoting compliance with environmental health laws. And the Public Health Division improves community health by providing information, resources, access, and services to Lake County residents. And whereas Public Health Week also recognizes the partnership and service of local, public, and private agencies, foundations, community partners, academia, and health-related enterprises that are working in collaboration to promote healthy behaviors and bolster the Health Services Department efforts in improving the health outcomes of Lake County residents. Now therefore let it be proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake do hereby recognize April 7th through 13th, 2025 as Public Health Week in Lake County, passed and adopted this eighth day of April 2025 and signed by our Chair, E.J. Crandall. Thank you.
First off, just want to say thank you to everybody on our staff for serving the residents of Lake County, for all the hard work you guys do year round. You know, I want to also assure you guys that, you know, with the dynamics of the political, uh, federal government going on, that I'm committed to you guys, I'm committed to Lake County. Public health is all about preventing suffering and keeping your guys' quality of life as healthy as possible and as long lasting as possible. And I just want to let you guys know here that these servants, our public servants are here for you guys and we're going to do everything that we can to continue to make sure that Lake County is on the rise, both economically and in terms of our health. So I want to thank you guys all and Leila, thank you again for two well-written proclamations this morning.
Anybody from the board?
Are you taking comments?
Yes, 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 please come up. That's what I would, that's where I was just going next.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Elise Jones and I'm the Director of Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And in 2019, actually, I worked for the Health Services Department for one year and, um, and then I went back home to behavioral health. But it was a incredible experience. I had no idea the range and scope of, um, support that is done silently, that people have no idea, um, the fact that people don't struggle as much with lead poisoning, that tuberculosis is maintained. There's so many facets of our health that, um, are taken care of so well that we take them for granted. And so I really applaud the Health Services Department and leadership for elevating the profile of healthcare and public health. You have an incredible staff. I know you know that. And I want to also thank you for your, your forward thinking and progressive leadership. Um, we consider health services like a sister department and long ago, we were actually married. Uh, but things have changed, but we continue to have really robust partnerships, the Safe RX Program, um, all of our efforts to combat the opioid, um, epidemic that has impacted our community. So just, um, really expressing my deep heartfelt thanks and also assuring public health, you know, uh, what, you know, no matter what happens at levels of government that we don't have control over, I have never faltered in my belief that this community would come together for each other and that there are good people, um, behind the scenes running our local government. So thank you.
Go ahead, Bruno.
I just want to add that there's been some great successes coming from the Public Health Department in the last year or so, whether it's our mobile unit that is doing home visits currently, uh, whether it's our, um, tobacco. I was finding the words, but yeah, tobacco ordinances that have passed, um, or even right now, the work that's being done to update our, um, our CHNA, our Community Health Needs Assessment. And that helps us focus on making changes in our community and the healthier we are, uh, the more opportunities we will take to enhance and increase our quality of life, as you stated. And I appreciate all the work that's been done and it's been turbulent at times, uh, but I really feel like there's been a lot of progress in the recent times and I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's put into it.
Just listening to this proclamation, it made me think of a couple of things. Um, over the weekend, I went with a family member, um, who, who had, we have a situation with cancer. And so, you know, we, we all really don't know where, all of it stems from. We know where a lot of it comes from when it comes to like tobacco use and all this other, the other things, you know, whatever you eat. But, um, we, we still don't have it tied down, if that makes any sense. We just know it's a deal, right? And so with, uh, a lot of the work that you do to, um, combat any of the, um, listed, um, you know, whatever provides the ailments, right? Whatever leads to it, you all do your work there. Um, and I, and one of the things I was thinking about in talking with my relative was that, you know, you know, 200 years ago, you know, before that, you know, of course they lived more healthier lifestyles because they had to make things. They had to walk, they had to do all, they worked from, you know, 12-hour days just to survive, you know, and live. And so now, uh, we're not as mobile as that and we eat different foods, but yet we do have these modern medicine, uh, you know, technology and, and different, uh, um, you know, cures for this at, at different times. And so, um, so I don't know, I just, I think at times, you know, your work, getting, getting people out in the community, uh, teaching them, like Supervisor Sabatia said, getting the mobile clinics out and whatnot, uh, plays a big difference. But at the same time, it's just being cognizant of a lot of these things, you know? And so, um, I'm glad that we're doing a lot of other work like parks and whatnot so people can, you know, have those types of other outreaches as well, you know, and, and things to do. So again, thank you for this proclamation and thank you all for the work you do.
All right. Anybody else?
All right. Sam, I think we're ready for your picture.
There we go. Okay, now I have everybody. Brad, I don't have you. There, thanks. Yeah, now I have everybody. Okay. Okay. One more. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank everyone.
Thank you.
I sent you a email. I saw your face.
I saw it.
Just now. Welcome back.
All right. Next. We have our 6.6.
I expect full report of the trip.
A public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 9, Chapter 15 of the Lake County Code, updating water vessel inspection program. This will be, uh, conducted by the Water Resources Department and Director Upadhyay is going to be presenting this.
Uh, I think I will go ahead and read the summary for the Water Vessel Inspection Program Ordinance Update. The Water Vessel Inspection Program, as outlined in Article 9, Chapter 15 of the Lake County Code, was originally established to protect Lake County's water bodies from the invasive quagga and zebra mussels. These species pose a severe ecological and economic threat to local water resources, infrastructure, and aquatic ecosystems. With the recent discovery of golden mussel in Bay Area, there is pressing need to expand the scope of our county ordinance to proactively address this new invasive threat, along with any other future freshwater mussel invasions. Updating the Water Vessel Inspection Program is a necessary step to safeguard the Lake, Lake County's water resources from the expanding threat of invasive mussels. Staff has revised the ordinance accordingly and requests the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed amendment to strengthen the county's invasive species prevention efforts. Proposed amendments. The amendment to Article 9, Chapter 15 of the Lake County Code will, first, expand the Water Vessel Inspection Program to include golden mussels and other invasive freshwater mussels. Two, provide a legal framework for enforcement and prevention efforts. Three, ensure the county is proactively protecting its water bodies against emerging aquatic invasive species.
All right. Anything else to add or any questions? Supervisor Sabatia?
So I think that the changes that are being offered are simple changes and I don't have any issues with the changes, but since we are looking at the ordinance as a whole, um, wanted to at least bring up something. We're obviously adding these changes and have already created this ordinance in the beginning due to the fears that mussels and other invasive species, uh, the way that it can impact not only the recreation on our lake, but also the public utilities, uh, that draft water for drinking water. And it's already, our lake is already difficult enough to treat, let alone if this is an added, um, uh, issue to, to our water utilities. And while on one end, there is the criminal citations, and I'm going to ignore that, I think that's, that's for, um, uh, pretty, um, tough situations and issues that could be created. However, administrative fines, if you find somebody in violation, meaning you didn't get a sticker, you didn't care to, uh, get checked, and you're in our lake, it's a hundred-dollar fine, but potentially you have ruined the lake forever. And I feel that, I, I know what we're, I know we're following state law as far as, I got some, uh, materials from Water Resources. Thank you for sending that over. Uh, but I also know that we have taken steps for other types of violations and I'll just say as, such as cannabis, uh, where we have increased the potential fines. And I'm wondering if it's possible to come back with stiffer fines for the potential contamination of our entire lake where once it's here, getting rid of it is, is very, very difficult, if not close to impossible, and the costs will be exponential, uh, in, in, in increases. So I just feel like it's not a deterrent, the way that it's set at 100, um, 100, 200, 500, um, and then 1,000 if it's, uh, four different violations. But all it takes is one boat, one time. Uh, and I just feel that this is not the deterrent that we should have, especially for how porous our lake is for the amount of places that people can, uh, uh, launch their boats from. It's not just from our public, uh, utility, uh, public, uh, facilities that we have. So I'm just wondering if that's a possibility of coming back with a, uh, difference of administrative fines. Other than that, the red line stuff, uh, simple, easy, adding golden mussels, I think makes perfect sense.
Are we allowed to add them on the fly today or do you, should we flesh it out and bring it back like Supervisor Sabatia said?
That would be, uh, part of it would depend on, uh, staff's ability to, um, incorporate the proposed changes. So two main options for your board would be to either, um, incorporate whatever amendments your board would have as it relates to administrative fines today and, um, and then move on, uh, proceed with the first reading of the ordinance as amended if there's details ready in place to be plugged in. Um, that, that would consist of those proposed amendments. That's one option. The other option is to continue, uh, the first reading of the ordinance at a date and time certain in order to give staff time to look into the administrative fines issue, how to, uh, make that more robust under the proposed.
Is that what you want?
I, I think we should move forward with what's here today and then request if there's any possibilities of, uh, making this more robust and have teeth to bring it back at a later time. I think we need golden mussels on there. Uh, I think that's an important part. I just wanted to mention the other part just because.
No, I think it's important.
I'm concerned.
I was just trying to make sure if we can move, because I know it's, people are starting to put boats in the water. So like, um, but I do want to make sure there's stiffer fines and whatnot to deter. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of the, looking at higher fines for this, but at the same time, don't want to really hold up the progress to get this ordinance update so we do have the authority on the additional mussels. I had a question for County Council. Do we have, uh, a, a general administrative fine ordinance that governs use of administrative fines on, uh, violations throughout our county code or are all these specific to each individual ordinance? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, I don't believe we do. I'll have to double check, but I, I don't believe we have a blanket administrative fines ordinance. It does go code section by code section within the Lake County Code. All violations of any county ordinance, uh, in terms of penalties or concern are certainly subject to just the general statutory fines. If it's expressly stated, could be treated either as an infraction or a misdemeanor. But going back to your question, um, need to double check, but my recollection, there's no blanket administrative fines, like as a catch-all of stories.
Right. Like they have, uh, Community Development has one for their purposes, you know, and whatnot. So that might be a good place to look or confer with while you're looking for that. But it, there could be differences when it comes to the need and whatnot. But I know they have one, but it's not a blanket like County Council said. Go ahead.
Yeah, I concur with, um, my colleagues on this, the stiffer fines, but also moving forward today with what we do have. Um, do you want some suggestions on where to start on the fines?
Yeah. I think our idea on saying like what the supervisors think, like maybe like doubling the fine because just, because this fine was set up like maybe a decade ago and at that time a hundred dollar might be a lot more than what it is today.
What about starting at the second or third level of the fines and taking out the first offense? What, what do my colleagues think on that?
I guess I'm, I'm not really wanting to provide specific details other than we would like to see stiffer penalties. Maybe you're not allowed on the lake because you obviously don't care about our lake. You've been caught twice trying to come in without getting a sticker. I have no idea what it should be, but I think between Water Resources and County Council, knowing what the limitations are so that we're not getting ourselves into the red where it gets us in trouble, uh, but knowing that we want stiffer fines and just coming back with here's, here are some options for us to review. I, I'd rather not call those out right now or I'm unsure what's even allowed or not allowed.
Yeah, I think we can brainstorm internally and then come up with a proposal later on.
You've been caught twice trying to come in without getting a sticker. I have no idea what it should be, but I think between Water Resources and County Council, knowing what the limitations are so that we're not getting ourselves into the red where it gets us in trouble. But knowing that we want stiffer fines and just coming back with, here's, here are some options for us to review. I'd rather not call those out right now, or I'm unsure what's even allowed or not allowed.
Yeah, I think we can brainstorm internally and then come up with a proposal later on.
All right.
Nope, I'm sorry.
All right, with nothing else from the board, did you have something else, Lloyd? Okay. I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that has a comment about this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. And it looks like we will move forward with this today and then for the second reading, have a more robust administrative, or fine structure in place. All right, we just need someone to offer.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the ordinance amending Article 9, Chapter 15 of the Lake County Code, read in title only, and I'll leave it at that for now.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, it's an ordinance amending Article 9 to Chapter 15 of the Lake County Code, establishing a fee-based inspection program for all water vessels launched in the County of Lake.
All right.
And Chair, I move to have the second reading of this ordinance at the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, just to clarify, for purposes of the second reading, it would be, the second reading would adopt the ordinance if passed as it is presented right now, with the administrative fine portions of that as your board, based on your board's discussion, would come at a later date upon staff's, upon.
Research and recommendation, okay.
Yeah. All right.
Agreed. That was still my motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, she got you. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, we have our, does anybody need a break or anything? We good? All right. Next, we have 6.7, consideration of federal update. Ooh, I have an erratum. Let me fix that. Right? You erratum?
Yeah.
Okay. Consideration of a federal update administration for children and families. Mass layoffs for discussion, consideration of federal updates.
Yes, thank you.
Director Dillman Parsons here.
Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Rachel Dillman Parsons, Social Services Director. With me here today are Kelly Page, my Deputy Director over fiscal, and Dina Eddings Green, our AAA Area Agency on Aging Program Coordinator. We also invited many of our partners today to provide public comment. Would you like them to comment per update? I have a very long list of updates.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. I did throw together a PowerPoint that I'm gonna go ahead and share just so we know where I'm at as I go through our updates. Okay. Here we go. And I need to change my presenter view. Okay. So today's federal updates are gonna include facts and analysis for you regarding the potential impact to social services, as well as the Area Agency on Aging, Section 8 Housing, and our partners within the community who serve the public that we serve. To be clear, I am a public servant and I do not lobby, nor do I express my political opinion. It is my obligation, under welfare institution codes 10500, to secure for every person the amount of aid to which they are entitled without commoner criticism. And social services mission is to promote social and economic self-reliance and protect those who are at risk. So today, I'm gonna go over our proposed budget, well, the proposed federal budget, not my proposed budget. It is still in the process. I will give you a high-level overview of what it currently looks like. I'll share some data with regard to what Lake County looks like in terms of social services, including the funds that currently come into our county. Look at some enacted changes, which are not cuts or layoffs, but do impact service delivery for the people we serve. And then we'll take a look at actually enacted cuts and layoffs. And they're coming fast. I'm doing my best to keep this comprehensive. I may have missed some. The County Welfare Directors Association is analyzing all of this, but they have not yet released their full analysis. I have been in contact with them and they are coordinating with CDSS, the California Department of Social Services. And I do have a directors' meeting with CWDA on Friday, at which I may have more information to share after that. Okay, so here is what the federal budget potentially will include, as well as some information with regards to California's funding. So these federal cuts, layoffs, tariffs, and this proposed budget, we'll be putting our most vulnerable are seniors, veterans, disabled individuals, children and families at risk. They will also create a barrier to economic self-reliance. So for historical purposes, or just for reference, the federal budget year runs October through September. And the federal government has been operating on a continuing resolution while they work on finalizing the federal fiscal year '25 budget. There is a continuing resolution that has approved continuation of services at 2024 levels, which is better than nothing, and it is approved through September. However, the House did pass a budget and the Senate has picked that up and started negotiations. It looks like we're gonna have a final budget by May prior to expiration of the September continuing resolution. That happened this Saturday. The Senate passed that amended budget April 5th. It definitely includes proposed cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, the Affordable Care Act, SNAP, and a variety of other programs that serve the public. For clarity, Medicaid is known in California as Medi-Cal, and many of our residents here in Lake County may know it as Partnership. That is the managed care provider for Medi-Cal in Lake County. And SNAP is known as CalFresh in Lake County and formerly known as FoodStamps. Many people still know it under the name of FoodStamps. So this plan does lack specifics. It essentially directs the committees to find savings pending reconciliation. And reconciliation is when the House and the Senate come together and agree to a final budget to put before the President for his approval. Some experts are positing that the lack of specifics is to allow for that negotiation between the Senate and the House and also to make it less clear exactly what they intend to cut from Medicaid. Okay, here is what Lake County looks like, what my department, Social Services, is delivering on a monthly basis to the folks we serve. Fifty percent of Lake County is on Medi-Cal. Twenty-five percent of Lake County gets CalFresh. That's bringing $3 million monthly into the local economy. It is between $1.45 and $1.75. Between, depending on which study you look at, that CalFresh creates economic activity in Lake County. For every dollar in CalFresh, $1.45 economic activity occurs. You know, you purchase your food at the local grocery store. The local grocer pays the rent and so on. It brings, it brings funding into our county. Same thing for all the funding in these programs. Eight hundred and ninety-two families receive CalWorks. That's $900,000 a month coming into our community. Two hundred and seven, 2,716 people receive IHSS benefits. That is a program that allows individuals who would otherwise be in long-term care to stay in their homes and receive assistance to remain in their homes. It is a cost savings overall because long-term care is far more costly than IHSS services. We are paying $6 million monthly to the providers of those services. That is a larger payroll than my staff. One hundred and twelve reports of child abuse or neglect are received by Child Welfare monthly. Forty-nine reports of elderly or disabled abuse are received monthly by my Adult Protective Services staff. Our HUD Section 8 Housing voucher program currently assists 189 families and issues $145,000 approximately per month. And through our Area Agency on Aging, approximately 70,895 meals are served in partnership with senior centers. So there is a lot at stake and even more that our partners provide in services to the community, to the same populations we serve. What has been enacted in terms of changes? These are not financial or layoffs. These are just changes in how things might operate. So the tariffs are likely potentially to create an economic depression. If an economic depression does occur, the only funding my department has to backfill for any federal funding cuts is realignment. And realignment would decrease in an economic depression. That is because realignment is based on taxes, especially vehicle licensing fees. And when vehicles aren't selling, there's no, no money coming into realignment for us. So that is certainly on our radar as an additional consideration in what we can do to make up for any federal cuts. Social Security did implement a couple changes that will impact particularly the people that the Area Agency on Aging serves, as well as my Adult Services Division. They are requiring identity proofing for individuals to start or change direct deposit effective March 31st. I don't hate that it helps to prevent identity theft or theft of benefits, but it does create a barrier for individuals who are unable to leave their home. The first thing that you do to try and prove your identity is by phone or online. Access technology or ability to use technology can be a barrier for this population. So the requirement then would be to come into the office to verify your identity, which may be a burden. And in a worst-case scenario, please make a referral to my Adult Services, Adult Protective Services folks for neglect. The individual can also refer themselves. And then my social workers will go out and help them get their direct deposit ironed out with Social Security. So at least there's that resource. And I'm sure senior centers and others would be willing to jump in. Another very concerning thing is that 100% of overpayments in Social Security will be collected starting March 27th. Previously, only 10% of your future monthly Social Security payments were taken back if you had an overpayment. Still allowing you to pay your bills, continue to be housed. Now, if there is a overpayment in Social Security, they're gonna recoup 100% until it's paid back. This is gonna leave folks on Social Security with no money for however many months it takes to repay that overpayment. That is concerning. We will certainly, or at least I think we will see a increased demand for services in my department. And I think we will see an increase in housing instability and even potentially homelessness at a time where potentially we are seeing less resources to address these things. So these are actual enacted changes. They are in place. The tariffs are in place. I'm sure you've seen it in the news. There's so much flying around. There was a rumor going around that the administration had put a 90-day pause. That is not true. It was a false account. If you had seen any news regarding that. All right, here is what is actually happening again in the realm of cuts and layoffs. So Health and Human Services at the federal level, Robert F. Kennedy is over this, this branch. Depending on which reports you trust, because data is hazy, 25 to 38% of staffing is gone. That's 20,000 or more federal employees who assisted in operating this branch to the government. Funding through HHS supports many of our partners, supports in part what my agency does, as well as public health and behavioral health. What is the potential impact of such mass layoffs? Even though funding is not cut, there will most likely be funding delays because the people who handle issuing that funding are no longer there perhaps. And there's certainly gonna be program disruptions. It'll be harder to get guidance, get waivers around operations. So I know Robert F. Kennedy said he was going to potentially reinstate some of those employees, 10% of those employees who had been fired. So far, that has not happened. So this is not under HHS, but the Administration for Community Living has been entirely eliminated. It no longer exists. We have been told, or at least the news has been told, that the plans are for the ACL to be absorbed by Health and Human Services. The remaining staff there, no plan has been released as to how that might really look or happen. So it's kind of unclear what the impact is. I would say it's likely along the same lines as the elimination of staffing at HHS. It'll be difficult to pull down funding. And currently, because there is no staff, perhaps impossible, definitely impossible, until it is absorbed by HHS. So what did the ACL do? This is directly a concern for our Area Agency on Aging and our senior centers. The ACL provides a myriad of supports to older adults and people with disabilities by ensuring they can live where they choose, participate fully in their communities, and access necessary services. So not great news. So Aging, Justice in Aging did release a statement. They are a group that partners with CDA and advocates for these individuals. If access to the programs that ACL oversees is hindered, older adults and people with disabilities will lose the ability to choose where and how they want to live and fully participate in their communities. Many will be forced into institutions where they need help with activities of daily living, such as bathing, dressing, eating. Families who are struggling to care for loved ones will now have to turn for, will have nowhere to turn for the training respite and support they need. Older adults will lose access to adult day programs where they can receive meals, socialize with others, and access basic preventative care. Availability of transportation services to senior centers and doctor's appointments will end when an older adult experiences financial exploitation or abuse. The free legal services they rely on will not be available. So if you wanna pause here and take comment from senior centers, is that what, would you like me to go on or so? Okay.
Senior centers, yeah, that'd be good. If there's anyone here from senior center.
Would anyone come on? If you'd like to make comment, come on up.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Gonzalez. I am a local Realtor. I'm also the Executive Director of the Lister and Alpine Senior Center. I'm here to convey that the senior center isn't just a place for our elders to go, but for a lot of seniors, it's a lifeline. And we provide very substantial things like home-cooked meals that are overseen by a nutritionalist, as well as a safe and happy environment to socialize and improve cognitive health. Our facility is a vital place for our elders' physical and mental wellness. Additionally, funding-wise, every dollar contributed to the senior center, if we, you know, wanna think about it like that, yields a return on its investment when we help sustain our elders and their health through nutrition and their cognitive improvement through socialization and activities. They're better able to remain independent and contribute to our local economy as they make up over a quarter of Lake County's economy. You know, it's pretty impactful to consider keeping that and sustaining that impact on our economy. It'd be, I, you know, I personally believe, you know, being involved in this, it would be detrimental to our community to lose any sort of funding for the seniors and the people who frequent the center. It's a source of livelihood for a lot of people who would otherwise be housebound or depressed if they didn't have a community to live for and be involved in. Our funds are minimal as it is, but the impact that we have on the human life that is around us and here is really tremendous. So, you know, if it does come down to budget cuts and things, you know, I think that it is an important factor to consider finding another way to fund these facilities and programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again. My name is Lisa Morrow. I'm the executive director for Lake Family Resource Center. And in addition to all of the programs that we offer, we also administrate the Lakeport Senior Center. Sorry, wrong speech. So I would like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. I want to bring to your attention, well, you've already got that, sorry about that, the potential closure of the Administration for Community Living. The ACL is a federal agency that supports community living and independence for older adults and people with disabilities. It also oversees, and this is where my concern is, the Older American Act funding, which makes it possible for senior centers like ours to provide vital services. If the ACL is shuttered or significantly defunded, the local consequences could be immediate and severe. Our seniors come to the Lakeport Senior Center to have a meal, catch up with friends, play bingo, line dance, and participate in Tai Chi, among other things. The center is quite literally a center for their lives. Severe cuts would greatly affect them. However, the biggest concern lies with our most at-risk and vulnerable clients, our Meals on Wheels clients. Our biggest priority must be that the Older Americans Act stays intact and that there are no disruptions to the administration of or flow of funding. We, as North Shore Meals on Wheels providers, are already operating on extremely thin margins. One in three programs have a waitlist for services. Thank goodness, we have been able to serve all clients who are eligible in our area so far. We cannot sustain it without receiving expected office OAA reimbursements on time and in full. Without the support, our most vulnerable residents could face increased isolation, you've heard this before, malnutrition, preventable hospitalizations. And family caregivers already doing so much would carry even more of the burden, especially with the loss of respite programs and support services. On top of that, we would lose the planning and coordination provided through the Area Agency on Aging, the structure that ensures our community resources are targeted, effective, and equitable. Lake County has one of the highest percentages of seniors in California. The need for these services is growing, not shrinking. We simply cannot afford to lose the systems that support our aging population. I respectfully ask this board to stay informed on this issue and to continue formal advocacy through a letter to our congressional delegation, a local resolution, or participation in broader statewide efforts. Your leadership can help ensure our seniors continue to live with the dignity and independence they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when was the closure?
It happened at the end of March. Sorry. It happened at the end of March. There were quite a few closures between like the 27th and the end of March, somewhere in there. I can find your exact date if you want to know.
That's okay.
Dina, do you have any comments as she is over our area agency on aging?
There may also be some senior centers on Zoom. I'm not sure if they want to speak. It's probably Jill Rexrode from the Fort Bragg Senior Center.
I'm on Coastal Seniors.
Oh, coastal, okay. It's Rebecca.
Do you want her to speak?
Yeah, Rebecca, go ahead and speak.
Okay, hi. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rebecca Stewart, and I am speaking on behalf of Coastal Seniors, which serves Point Arena and the surrounding communities of Mendocino. It's very isolated, rugged territory. We serve over 1,000 meals a month. So this would make it, if there were any cuts or reduced funding, it would make it nearly impossible to continue use for wellness checks for isolated seniors, checks that often detect falls, illness, or emotional distress. Staff hours, community programs are being scaled back, threatening everything from transportation to social connection. The weight of this crisis is, and just the idea of funding being cut even more, is just really weighing on our seniors. They're very concerned. They reach out constantly. Our little local newspaper is quite aware of how everyone is feeling. I think what is happening now is more than a fiscal issue. It's a public health concern and a community emergency, especially for us. Right now, and just in our little town of Point Arena, which is over 400 people, we're doing a food bank as I speak, and we've already served over 300 individuals. So that number's staggering. It just shows how deep the need runs in our rural coastal communities. I just hope that everyone understands and tries to prioritize and advocate for senior center funding, not just to maintain basic support, but to protect the dignity, health, and the lives of our elders. Thanks.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Yes, and just before you go, Supervisor Price, the AAA is the board that we're on as well and that we work with. And this group is part of that AAA.
Right. The Area Agency on Aging is for both Lake and Mendocino Counties.
And so a lot of the different senior centers, like Lou Surin, I'm glad you came and spoke, ma'am, because they had really just got to the point of having the capability to start serving meals and getting that funding, and now with this in mind. And they've done a lot of work to have their center just upgraded and all of those different things. And now this is the next challenge, but just wanted to highlight that. And Supervisor Price, I'm sorry about that.
No, I was going to say the same thing. The AAA is both Lake and Mendocino Counties. So although that story is from Mendocino County, it does tell the story of our senior centers too. And the Older Americans Act was left out of the December resolution, but then put back in the March resolution.
Correct.
But then now is...
At risk once again.
At risk once again. So although there is technically funding through September with this resolution, it is still very unclear.
If the budget is passed in May, that will potentially change the fact that at this point in time, there's funding through September. Whatever rolls down in the budget, and I'm presuming it'll pass in May. That's what people are predicting. Whatever happens there will immediately potentially impact our operations. I believe we have one more senior center online?
Yes. Go ahead and state your name, and then go ahead and speak.
This is Jill Rexrode. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I'm Jill Rexrode. I'm the executive director for the Coastal Senior Center. I've been the director here since 2018. And I've been through a lot of changes and challenges since being here with COVID and so on. I'm looking at this as another challenge. I'm trying to be optimistic that the budget will pass and include the OAA. People on the coast are very panicky about this situation. There were rumors that we were going to close our doors in March and all kinds of things. So I've been trying to reassure our community that we will stay open. And I'm really hoping that you continue to advocate for the OAA to be passed, which I know that you will because it affects so many people. I want to say that we serve over 55,000 meals a year between our Meals on Wheels program and our congregate dining. So that is almost 5,000 meals a month. That's a lot of food going out our door. We have a really small staff, and we, as far as I'm concerned, we are rocking it every day, providing good services to our community. And I really hope that the funding can continue. We have a board of directors who are very active in trying to find alternative funding sources in the event that the OAA isn't passed. So we are, we're not just sitting here on our hands, hoping. We are trying to actively seek other funding as well in the event of an emergency.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, did you have something?
I just, I have a question before she finishes. A question before we close out of this presentation, if we're ready for that.
Yeah, yeah.
You mentioned the, with the situation with the identity verification on Social Security. And we have folks that can't leave their home. You had mentioned, have them give you a call. But I just want to confirm, do we have the ability, either through your department or the senior centers, to help transport or to help facilitate those things?
My staff would attempt to help them through online means first.
Okay, sorry. My staff would attempt to help them navigate the online identity verification process first. But if that was not successful, we can transport them.
Okay, thank you.
I know when I tried to do it for IRS, I had a hard time making it recognize me.
And then just to confirm, on the money for the Meals on Wheels, so if we, I know it's come back in and gone out, so if we do end up losing it, that we're looking at the range of a million dollars? I believe that was the number before?
Yes. We are funded 60% federally and 40% via state for our programs. And some of the programs are entirely federally funded. So only the Meals program and a small portion of them would still continue to be funded if all federal funding is cut.
I believe, have we already issued the state funding that we could use to backfill to the senior centers? Or we're in the process?
Those contracts will be executed at the April 24th Governing Board meeting.
Right. So yeah, there was alternate state funding that we had initially planned to use to backfill when we weren't sure if the funding would be restored in the continuing resolution in March. Since it was restored, we have now moved forward with passing that funding directly on to senior centers to use more flexibly. They can choose how to supplement their programs with it as opposed to just putting it towards the Meals programs. And it sounds like those will be executed in April.
Wasn't that funding a little bit more limited? I'm trying to remember the conversation that we had.
Yes, the funding that will be approved in April at the April Governing Board meeting is only for Meals. It's just the meal funding.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was more flexible.
There is a small portion, but we have not executed contracts for that yet.
Okay.
Supervisor Owen was next, yeah.
Yeah, I had a question. You had mentioned about the 100% recouping of overpayments. So are you suspect, you made it, at least, I wanted to be clear. Are you thinking that there's been a lot of overpayments in the county then, it sounded like?
So, I mean, we serve people who receive Social Security benefits. Just to be clear, social services is not Social Security, just because sometimes we get their calls. In our caseloads, I have seen a handful of overpayments. It's not frequent, but they do exist. As a caseworker, I mean, I used to be a caseworker, and I ran across maybe five in the...
So it wouldn't be a big detriment?
It would not be a large number of people, I would suppose. But for the number, the individuals impacted, it would be a huge impact.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that was the ACL update. It is not the end of my updates, I'm sorry to say. Are we ready?
Just real quick, I'm going to open it up for the public, just for this item, in case there's anyone that has a question, so we can move on. Anyone on Zoom? All right, we'll bring you back.
Okay. So the next one is the Administration for Children and Families, which I think a large portion of the rest of our partners may be here for. I will also end on the food bank cuts. So the Administration for Children and Families is a branch under Health and Human Services. Again, 25 to 38% of staffing gone. Potential impacts, funding delays, program disruptions. We have a chart here that explains exactly how ACF funding budget breaks down. So TANF, which locally is CalWorks, as well as Tribal TANF, 24% of that funding comes is ACF. 17% of ACF's funding they pass out is Head Start. 16% is foster care, 17% is childcare, 6% is child support, 6% is LIHEAP. And I'll touch on what all these programs do in just a minute. 3% is a mash of other programs. Nine is refugee and entrance assistance, and that is for legal refugees and entrants. We're not talking about illegal immigrants. 2% is for the Social Security block grant, and 1% is promoting safe and stable families, which is a CDRS program. So what is TANF? As I mentioned, it is our CalWorks program, as well as a Tribal TANF overseen by tribes. It is a time-limited program that helps low-income families with minor children find employment and become self-sufficient. My fiscal director will have more to add to this after I end my comments. Head Start is federally funded. It promotes school readiness for infants, toddlers, preschoolers, and low-income families. It provides free learning and development services to children ages birth to five. Focused on learning, health, and family well-being, the program actively engages parents, reorganizing their participation as key, recognizing their participation as key to child outcomes. NCO, East Center and Lake Family Resource Center currently oversee Head Start programs here in Lake County. Foster Care provides a safe and stable place for abused and neglected children to live. Social Services oversees foster care placements. It is a large portion of the funding we pass on. I want to say it's more than double our staffing costs is what we put towards foster care payments. Childcare, subsidized childcare is funded also through ACF. NCO oversees that program here in Lake County, including overseeing our CalWorks Stage 1 childcare via a contract with our office. Child Support establishes paternal responsibility and distributes quartered child support that connects with our office, in that Medi-Cal and CalWorks both have requirements for us to attempt to identify our parents' responsibilities when there is an absent parent and the family is receiving benefits. LIHEAP is Low Income Utility Assistance Program. It is operated by North Coast Energy Solutions. And all federal employees, which were only 11 folks, were eliminated from the branch that oversees LIHEAP. So that's another situation where it's not just a percentage of the staff, it's everybody who oversaw that program is gone. So we're not sure what's going to happen there. The Social Services Block Grant funds both Adult Protective Services and Child Welfare Services. Promoting safe and stable families is a program that provides formula grants each year to states, territories, and tribes. So this may impact our tribes as well with regard to child abuse and neglect. The purpose of this program is to prevent child malt treatment and the unnecessary separation of children from families, improve the quality of care and services to children and their families, and ensure permanency for children, promoting adoption, placement, reuniting with them with their parents, or providing other permanent living arrangements. Okay, so before I jump into partner comments, do you have more on the funding you want to share with us, Kelly?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How about now? Okay. My comments are really just based on the Administration for Children and Families and what that truly means to social services. The way I see it is a cut in staffing is effectively a cut to funding. If reimbursements are delayed, that means for social services, we're using our realignment funding to try to keep these programs at current levels. The more cuts there are to all of these programs, and there are several, as Rachel just listed, the harder it will be to stretch our realignment funding in a time when sales tax revenue will be low, vehicle licensing fees will decrease. So our realignment will definitely be lower. And trying to equitably keep these programs going at a level that meets the need is going to become very difficult. And I think some of the program names that might be familiar to people, the Family First Prevention Services Act through Child Welfare, the Emergency Child Care Bridge Program for Foster Children through Child Welfare, the Independent Living Program through Child Welfare, the CalWorks Program, which is also TANF. Also, we have the Social Services Block Grant, which funds many of our programs for Child Welfare. And the approved relative caregiver funding, which is also through the ACF, will be impacted. So the biggest hit will definitely be to our children. And I don't want to sound all gloom and doom, but that is the reality of laying off the staff like we're seeing.
Thank you, Kelly. Partners? Do you two invite the partners?
Yes, is there, if there's anyone in the, yes, we have some folks in chambers, and then we'll go to the Zoom. Yes, we have some folks in in chambers, and then we'll go to the Zoom.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Dan McIntyre. I'm the Executive Director for North Coast Opportunities. And while I don't think there's a direct attack on Head Start, there is definitely an attack on the division that supports Head Start, which indirectly then threatens the programs. And a good example for us is with the advent of TK in the state of California, there's been a need for more space on local campuses. So we've been asked to leave Upper Lakes Campus and do a new development for Head Start in Upper Lake. However, now with the cut of the San Francisco office, the delays in those 1303 applications that we need for the funding could impact our ability to relocate that campus, which then leads to a cascading effect of providing services in the county. And that's no fault to anybody locally. That's just how the process works out. Another thing that happens for us is we're at the end of our five year contract with, for a new baseline adjustment with HUD, with, not HUD, with Health and Human Services for Head Start, that we just submitted March 31st, and they cut the offices on April 1st. So we're not really sure where that's at, but our funding ends in June 30th. So that will be another major barrier that we have to work across should we not get that renewed in time. There's limited funding for that moving forward. So at NCO, while we do that, we also mentioned we do the childcare for the CalWorks side. We also do the Cal, the childcare for the state side. The issues that convolute for us is that as Medicare gets cut at the federal level, that's going to directly involve how well the state funded, state funded childcare is going to be affected. So these impacts affect NCO as an organization greatly because both Head Start and childcare make up a large portion of our fiscal budget, as well as of our administrative budget, which then affects every other program. So while Head Start may not be directly attacked, you know, like from a fiscal standpoint, because I think it will be funded, the ability for us to continue our operations and go through all the processes to do new sites, get the funding to start that process for new sites is going to be delayed to a point where we then we can't move in the timeframe that we have set out by the end of 2026. So there's a direct impact that we're, you know, we will probably come back and ask for some direct support from the supervisors to help us move those processes forward as speedily as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? Okay, there we go.
Back. Did you guys miss me? So again, my name is Lisa Morrow. I'm the Executive Director for Lake Family Resource Center. And among all of the things that we do, Early Head Start is one of, also one of our programs that will be affected. In addition to, so on behalf of my myself, our Board of Directors, which in addition to Mr. Torres, Ms. Angela Quay Armaquín also serves on our board, and I appreciate the support here today. I won't repeat a lot of the things that I was going to say that people have. But I want to say the Office of Ed Head Start has informed us that support will continue through their online systems and other channels. But the National Head Start Association has raised serious concerns about the impact of these closures on service quality and oversight. Our most pressing concern, much like with Dan, is securing timely approval of our grant reapplication before our program ends on April 30th. A delay could lead to a service gap. That is 74 children in our community who will be impacted immediately May 1st if our funding is delayed for any reason. And we are looking at a possible employee furloughs, which are 22 individuals with our, within our organization. This isn't just an administrative issue. It directly affects the family and childrens that we serve. In addition, and as Dan was pointing out, we will continue to advance our 1303 application. As you know, we are looking to purchase and build a new Early Head Start Center because our current location is located in the Vista Point Shopping Center, which is scheduled to be demolished July 1st. But with the loss of the Region 9 staff who knew our project and its history, this adds another layer of complexity to, to an already demanding process. Without their institutional knowledge, we expect to face delays and the need for additional justifications. Despite these challenges, we remain committed to maintaining consistent, high quality services. We are working hard to adapt, seek out alternative support, and secure funding necessary to move forward. Our families depend on us, all of us in this community. And in addition to those, and I'll have to say today was my first heads up on the CalWorks funding. Lake Family Resource Center also has three separate programs that receive CalWork funding. And that is our differential response, our child abuse prevention intervention and treatment programs, as well as our DV Welfare to Work programs. That could be severely impacted. I don't have any stats on that off the top of my head. However, it's, it's looking grim, so we'll see how, see how it goes. Thank you for your time.
But stats are there, right? And they can, and they can be requested by folks that are at a higher level making these cuts that can determine that it's working, right? So I just wanted to add that. Thank you for that.
Samantha Bonham, the Executive Director for First Five Lake. And I don't hold a Head Start program, but I do support a lot of our childcare programs here in the community through a lot of the work that we do. And I just want to elevate some of the work that we're going to be doing tomorrow because all First Fives will be at the State Capitol tomorrow. And so some of those conversations will be around the fact that a third of this California state budget is impacted by the federal government's budget. And so not only does this $10 billion cut, potential cut to HHS have, it directly impacts things like Rachel was saying around Medicare, Medi-Cal, and a lot of the programs that we serve, including our new PATH Sighted, which a lot of First Fives across the state have a, what's called an IGT grant, which is, it's federally given, and we have to have a match program. And so a lot of the PATH Sighted stuff here in the state is a match. We are also asking our state capitalists around providing a zero to five continuous eligibility or enrollment process so that none of our zero to fivers actually get dropped off of the Medi-Cal program while they're in that critical age range, which we see a lot of them dropping off. And we're going to see a lot more dropping off with immigration scares, as well as these cuts to Medi-Cal funding at the federal level. So there's a lot of direct impact that will come down, as Rachel and her team have stated here today. And First Fives are doing our best to try to advocate for what we can here locally, but also at the state level. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Angela Quay Armaquín. I'm the Childcare Planning Council Director, as well as the Quality Counts Program for the Lake County Office of Education. Here in support, also sit on the board for LFRC. I'm also a community participant in the Parent Policy Council for the migrant Head Start Program for E Center. And just the detriment of what can happen in our community and the needs of childcare already are scarce. And with TK, Universal Preschool coming into play, we are seeing more and more programs. Our own Lake County Office of Ed State Preschools are losing three of their sites as well in Conocda Unified School District. And so we're moving on to seeing even more impacts of trying to support all these programs. Although we're not directly funded through the federal government for like Head Start, our state preschools are also, we're going to start seeing those cuts and locations are not available. So we're struggling, we're struggling really hard right now to continue to provide these services. But as we start seeing, you know, cuts to like the CalWorks programs that help support families going to work, if you can't afford childcare, you're going to stay home, you can't work. So it's just a big snowball effect. Personally, if it wasn't for programs like that, programs to go to school, I wouldn't have been, I'm not, I wouldn't be in the position I am in now because I was able to go to school because I had subsidized care, like the NCO program that helps support those childcare programs. So parents can get a head start in even just providing themselves with a career, a job. It's, it's going to be very detrimental. So having support from our local government, from all of our agencies that are here banded together to support the children of Lake County. We support the zero to 12 range, so zero to school age is really important. So please keep, keep supporting us as we will continue to keep doing our part as much as we can at our level as, as we stand here today. So thank you so much for your time. Rachel?
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Ford, and I'm with Scotts Valley Tribal TANF Program. I'm the Executive Director.
If you can come closer to the microphone, please.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm the Executive Director for Scotts Valley Tribal TANF Program. And we've already seen some of the impacts at our agency because they cut all our technical support. So we lost our team at Region 9 at the federal level, which at that time, we were in the middle of amendments, like I heard a previous colleague say, you know, and that pushes back, you know, a lot of amendments that we were trying to change for our program and operations. We also had to lay off staff because we have to continue to have a sustainable program. And so these timely approvals were delayed. They're up in limbo. We don't know what's going on. And that's been since January. So pretty much to, you know, ask the Board of Supervisors for your guys' support because this program, you know, services two tribes, two local tribes. We provide cash aid, supportive services to eligible Native American families, and we help promote self sufficiency. And we provide employment training. We provide childcare, childcare, so we pay for those services. So, so yeah, huge, huge program disruption. So we just are here today to ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? I know there's some on Zoom, so.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. So I am the Executive Director of North Coast Energy Services, and we are the Lihip provider for six California counties. We have been providing Lihip services since 1983 as an independent entity. In 2024, our program served 1,814 households in Lake County with 1.9 million in services. And 93% of our funding goes to assist households containing elderly, disabled, and children under five. Our programs provide utility assistance, weatherization, emergency heating and cooling, and severe weather, energy, and transportation services, which have been enacted several times for assistance with fires in Lake County. Without Lihip funding, my agency will close its door, laying off 39 employees, eight of which reside in Lake County. So we're asking that you support continued Lihip services. Currently, all 10 Lihip federal positions have been discontinued.
And your name for the record, ma'am?
Sandra Kleisner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for that, that comment. It's very important. I know that with the PG&E and all of the other, you know, I guess you could say, different problems that we deal with, this is a very important one as well when it comes to low income seniors, families. So thank you for that. Anyone else on Zoom? All right. Any questions from the board, just to follow up before I think you were, you were going to move on to another?
I have more sadly. I wish I didn't. Yeah, I think I have one, two, three.
Well, and I'll add to that. Sorry about that. So it, last week, when there was, I think it was Tuesday after the board meeting, I went home, you know, and my wife had been reading some of this stuff and told me, are you doing anything? Are you calling anybody? And I was like, no, I just got back. I'm tired. You better call somebody. So I did. And I reached out to, to our elected officials, and Congressman Thompson put me in touch with some staff about a lot of this and what Director Yvonne had just mentioned is exactly accurate. The staff, the TA assistants, people are updating their plans if they need help with some of their, anything, their budgets, that's what these folks are in place for, to conduct that. And also, so now if there's an application that needs to be turned in, it's just a lot of confusion. And it could be potentially, the worst case scenario, sent in and just denied, and then the program's left undone. There also was another explanation of a, there was an initiative put in place to do a pilot program in regards to work participation, and that has been rescinded. And it's, the way it was explained is it's more of a authorship type of thing rather than anything else. But you know, with these programs intact, there's a lot of talk about, do they work? Do they not work? Well, when you, you want a lot of your participants or your, you know, your clients to, you know, find a way to self sufficiency, and that's the point. And so when you do these pilot programs, this helps to get them to, I guess, put on your bootstraps. So and there's a lot of people doing it, and it's because of this different, you know, adjustments and pivots that are needed. And so that's one thing that's going to be suffering as well. So workforce, CalWorks, it's just, yeah, so that was part of that discussion that we had as well. And so if there's any information, like I forwarded some of the, some of the updates that we're getting from different, not only just agencies, but different, you know, you know, nonprofits or whoever they're suffering from this as well. So I'll just end there, but that's, I wanted to add that. I had that discussion.
Thank you. I know the entire board is very supportive, and I appreciate that. Okay, on, on with the doom and gloom. So Health and Human Services also did announce actual financial cuts. None have hit my department yet. They are in behavioral health and public health funding. It is estimated statewide, 120 billion in behavioral health services, 846 million in public health funding. I'm not going to jump deeper into those. I feel really it's more the realm of those department heads to provide some analysis, just making sure it's on radar because we do cross program referrals all, all the time. We serve the same population, so they do touch Social Services. A temporary restraining order was granted yesterday to pause those funding cuts, so it's currently in the litigation process. HUD, you may have seen in the news, oh, they're cutting the vouchers. They're talking about emergency housing vouchers. None of the other vouchers are currently at risk of being entirely cut. These emergency housing vouchers were intended to specifically address housing homelessness and people at risk of homelessness. We only currently have nine issued in Lake County, and the program itself has ended. So if, previously, so if you have a voucher, you're on the program. We just could not issue new vouchers. What is happening that is new here is that funding was supposed to last through 2030, and it has been announced that it will only last through 2026. So the ideal would be to transfer these folks into some other housing assistance programs so they would not be at risk of homelessness. But it just kind of depends on what is left to move them into in this landscape. Other things happening at the HUD level, our Dodge has proposed to move all three regional offices in California to one office in Los Angeles. Our regional office assisting us is in San Francisco, and the merge has not yet happened. I am talking with the Regional Housing Authority, who our housing authority hopes to, is, is planning on consolidating with. And we're looking at maybe moving up our timeline to July if we can make it happen just so that we don't have to attempt to make the transition with only one HUD office. We can continue to use our TA assistance in San Francisco during the transition. More to come on that. That one will come before your board, probably next week. Other things happening in HUD, we do anticipate a reduction in our administrative reimbursement rate as well as the voucher reimbursement rate. No official word as to what those percentages are quite yet, although there has been some rough analysis. It'll be 89% for admin and 87% for the vouchers. Other item here, Library Services Technology Act grant was revoked. The goodish news is that it will not impact our libraries. To check with Christopher Veach, he already drew down funding and purchased technology for our libraries. Not great that it's going away, this, but it will not impact our libraries, which is good. We do, at Social Services, often refer to people we serve, to the libraries, to make access of the technology that is available there.
So real quick, just like you said, draw, he drew down some funding, right? And so like with a lot of programs, is it possible to draw down? Sometimes you know it's been allocated. And so if you draw down, I know in some instances, folks have drawn down and then, you know, later on down the line, they give it back or whatever the case may be. In situations like this with so much confusion, confusion, are there penalties from doing that or maybe you can help?
Well, I will say for Social Services, all of the funding I have mentioned here is handed to us by CDSS. So CDSS is who is drawing down the funds and then distributing it to counties. CDSS has been drawing down as much as they can, from what I have seen recently, because of what you mentioned. But often, it depends on the program. For instance, for CalFresh, it's month by month, and so you can only draw down the next month. For CalWorks, you can draw down quarterly. So for CalWorks, they can draw down three months at a time. So that's why when we have a government shutdown and no more funding is coming in, CalFresh can go for about a month and CalWorks can go for about three months, most of the time, before we're hit with, there's no more funding to make this happen. So it varies program by program. It may be different for partners. I believe the tribes draw down federal funding directly, and they would have to speak to that. Kelly may have more to add. She's our money lady.
For federal funding in particular with HUD, you cannot draw down more than you need. It's a pass-through only, so you're not allowed to have really any reserves that are meaningful. And that's true, I think, of most federal programs.
Thank you for that. Did you want to elaborate on the tribal tanniff aspect or did she, was she, it was summed up? Okay.
It was summed up.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yes, please come forward.
I had to sit in the back. Just so this board's aware, the state has requested a significant amount of funding to draw down federally. And because of these cuts and these proposed changes, there is a significant amount of money that has not been received from the state level. I don't have those exact numbers. And this is not just CDSS, but also CDPH, so California Department of Public Health. They all come from HHS at the federal level. And so they, we're looking at a large portion of funding at the state that hasn't been received federally because of this.
Thank you.
Also, CDA, they, the California Department of Aging, they pass the funding on to us for the area agency on aging.
So we, we draw down the previous month, so this is April. We'll be getting reimbursed for March. So it's, we're a month behind. So we won't know if we don't have funding until we've already spent it.
Okay. Right. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that we talked about that because there's, there's thoughts that we could draw down, there's thoughts we can't. Then there's also the worry that with, you know, with the new overhead site committee looking into these things, what kind of penalties could happen?
Clawbacks. Yeah, they could be like-
Like, you know, I'm on this group and I'm like, wait, you know what? You drew down, so I'm gonna, you know, affect, you know, your, your funding from your forward. We don't know. So that's why I just wanted to make sure that we had the dialogue, you know, if there's any to add to that, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, no one wants to know this, but disaster and fire-related, there is, in my opinion, there will be impact. And we got a lady back there who might have more comment, Leah, from. But what I have seen and I'm concerned about is that the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant has been cut. NOAA has had staff layoffs. That's a federal-level entity that provides a lot of weather and predictions that can help both predict the chance of fires or other weather-related disasters. And while they are still operating, perhaps those reports will be less accurate or less frequent. U.S. Wildland Firefighting Workforce has seen layoffs and hiring freezes. And also the U.S. Forestry Service, who does forest management, like clearing out brush and the things that can catch fire, have also seen layoffs. That connects to Social Services in that we provide sheltering in the event of a disaster evacuation. So it is certainly on my radar that we may see a busier fire season, I'm very sorry to say.
Rachel, I just want to add something about that. So I was at a CSAC regional meeting and we were talking about disaster support. And, you know, when there's an event which leads to a declaration, which leads to mobilizing a lot of the resources that we typically do, Secretary Johnson from the state HHS, I asked her what happens when there's not the federal support, when we go to draw on those federal programs? And does the state have the ability to backfill? Because that's the question we're asking. Every single department is saying, well, okay, is the state gonna be able to cover this? And the answer is no. And she just said to me, we will have to reprioritize. And so that's what it looks like across the board. And if we have to, you know, if we have another event like that, we just don't know that we're gonna be able to serve the people in the same way that we have in the past.
And for sheltering, we were heavily on red cross and are grateful for their partnership and probably more than ever will need it. All right. Do we want to see if anyone has comments, Danny? Okay, she passes. All right. So the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau was proposed to be eliminated, but there is a temporary court order granted March 28th to pause that. Why am I concerned about this? They oversee financial institutions and there is the potential for financial abuse of elderly and disabled individuals if this protection is no longer in place. I'm sure the impact is much far, more far-reaching, but that's how it intersects with Social Services. Let's see. Okay. And here is our last agenda item, which is technically 6.8.
We combined. Just so everyone knows, I know I read it earlier, but we combined 6.7 and 6.8. Lloyd, is that accurate?
Yes, that's just for more clarification, 6.18 would be the 10:15 a.m. item, consideration of federal update food bank funding for discussion.
Yeah. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything new that I didn't provide during public comment last week. This is just an opportunity to accept more comment from our partners as well as your board. So to recap, the USDA has cut 500 million in funding from food bank banks for the Temporary Emergency Food Assistance Program. Our local provider of these benefits is the Cleaners. They do have other sources for the food bank. Food banks are open. All of the food banks are open. But thanks to this loss in funding, I am anticipating we may see less of a variety and perhaps less food altogether available. And our partners can speak more to that, I think. Come on up.
Hello. I am one of the volunteers for the Clear Lake Cleaners and I also serve as their vice president. In reading the news, I have been keeping up on it. I did make a phone call to the Department of Social Services yesterday. We talked to not only the person that we deal with, but even her boss this morning. Right now, we have no budget cuts rolling down to us. We have already ordered our staff. Now, there is this word called currently, we're not receiving any. I want us to be very aware of that. Just because it's not there today doesn't mean it will not be there tomorrow. And our concern is our public involvement, our community involvement with the people that we serve. We have graduated now to nine different distribution centers completely around the lake. We have about, approximately about 100, I'm gonna say 160 volunteers. Our whole operation is strictly volunteer. We have community members from all of your districts that show up twice a month. We give out food. Our numbers have been growing. Well, first they started growing with COVID, then the holidays came. But now I'm seeing that our numbers are higher than the holidays, so, which is speaking to something of food insecurities for our community. We are serving right now, our numbers for individuals is about 7,800, a little bit more, per month. We are serving for the community itself, besides our distributions. We are giving, well, we work with Clear Lake High School weekly. We give them food because the counselors there have identified students who are at risk. We are utilizing and servicing Hans Continuation School. We, Family Resource Center, anytime they call, we're there. And then we, we've got, Lake County Behavioral Department has come to us recently. So we're giving them out a dozen or more packages each month or more, well, actually twice a month. Dialysis, we have doctor's offices that are saying, hey, I've got elderly patients. So what we're seeing really is the elderly and children are at risk if something is to happen. The way we're, we're keeping our eye on it, one of the ways that, you know, we're looking at different ways that we can keep maneuvering on and where we're giving, let's say, you know, 55 pounds of food or 11 items in a bag, we may have to reduce that down. We are very grateful to our partners of the, in the area as far as grocery stores. We, here's the thing with them though. Everything that we retrieve from them on six days a week has a date life on it. It is not something, first of all, they don't give us enough. I mean, we need 2,200 of one item to feed all of our centers. We don't get that from our daily pickup. And sometimes, I mean, it, it serves us because not only do we have the twice-a-month giveaways at the nine distribution sites, but in Finley, we give away three times a week. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We have people at that door on a regular basis. Some repeat offenders, but not very many, you know. I mean, they're just hungry and they need food. So we are so grateful for Safeway Bruno's and Grocery Outlet. And I don't want to forget Papa's Murphy's Pizza because they do bring us some pizzas or whatever. And they go right out to the client. So we are able to serve them and pile them up with fresh fruit and fresh vegetables that Safeway sells in their little packages. We're so grateful for them. But keep in mind, we are not, we do not have a budget like our partner Redwood Empire. We do, cannot send envelopes for donations out and marketing materials. And I come from the marketing area in my past life, and we still are struggling to do that. We don't have funds. When we get funds, it goes to one thing. It goes to the food because that's what we're all about. So, and when money, I've, I've spoken recently to about a half a dozen service clubs and I'm finding out that because of Redwood Empire, and they are wonderful at what they do, and they are wonderful getting that word out there, when our community is donating to them, that goes into their big coffers for Sonoma, Del Norte, Mendocino, Napa. It goes, it goes into that. Not every dime of that comes back because they are not the food bank for Lake County. Cleaners is the only food bank recognized as Lake County, and we are the only ones that can provide the T-FAP food. So yes, we are keeping the eye on the T-FAP because we must. I think that's it. And I appreciate the board's support in anything here. And if any of you can get the word out that Clear Lake Cleaners, if they donate to us, it stays in Lake County. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. And your name again?
Leslie Firth.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
So a couple of things. The Cleaners is an amazing organization. And the fact that you've been doing it with mostly volunteers for so long is just incredible. So thank you all. I've been working with Loretta over the last couple of weeks to try and find a partner so that people, so that you're, so that you can receive donations much more easily. Right now, folks send food and donations to your physical address. But what we as a community need to do is support you in a way that you can have recurring donations set up so that you can have online donations. So we have, we're working on something. It's taken-
Thank you for that.
Yes, of course. This is incredibly important. And then I know that you also do receive support from Redwood Empire.
We do.
And then I know that Redwood Empire has been receiving, has been having some difficulties too.
Yes. Redwood Empire Food Bank is the CSFP distributor for Lake County. That's a specific and small program for elderly and disabled individuals. And it's not just Lake County alone. It's a, it's a multitude of counties. Cleaners is the main food bank for Lake County, certainly. The cuts were not the entire program, so I am glad to hear that Lake County is still on the schedule to receive the full distribution.
Currently.
Currently. Who knows what the future holds? Our REFB had reported a loss of approximately 700,000 in food deliveries that they wouldn't normally receive through that program. So while they are the CSFP provider, they have mentioned to me that they bring more food than CSFP gives them to cover for Lake County because of the, the need. So they do step in and provide some assistance as well.
It does.
Yeah, we're very grateful to the Cleaners as well.
We're very grateful for Redwood. We do get some, we, you know, they'll give us a list and say, we have this system, this available, and we'll order that way. So we're very grateful for all of it. We're all doing the same thing.
Absolutely. Feed the hungry in the community. The food resource list is also posted on Lake County Social Services Facebook page. It's available in both English and Spanish. It has a comprehensive list of all food banks, not just the Cleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank. It's any organization who provides a food bank or meals to the community.
Thank you for that. And thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone on Zoom? All right.
That is the end of my updates. And lastly, I will mention that there are senior resource lists in the lobby in both English and Spanish, if anyone would like to grab one in the public.
So go ahead, Vice Chair.
Could we get a copy of this presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. But if you want my notes, you can also have those. They're a little scratchy.
Yes, anything you're wanting to send would be helpful because we get a lot of questions too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is gonna help to, like, we'll be able to, like, this, this will be on the county website so people can actually, you know, because there's questions like this in the town halls and whatnot. So this helps. Go ahead.
Well, I, I just want to thank you, Rachel, for tracking all of these. We need to be aware. We serve a lot of people who rely on a lot of these services. This is, you know, we have high food insecurity in our county. We have a lot of needy folks who rely on, on these programs. So I really, really, truly appreciate how much you've put into tracking this. And that gives us the material so that we can do the advocacy that we are doing. And I, I want to let everybody know that we are in constant contact with Congressman Thompson's office and with our lobbyists, with Paragon, our advocacy groups that we're a part of, CSAC, RCRZ, NACO. All of those folks are tracking all of these so that we can share the resources. There's, because the number one thing that we have to do is look out for our people. We have to care for the people that live in Lake County. And, and that's, that's the number one priority for all of us right now. So thank you, Rachel. And thank you to the staff and the partners. I know this was a long item and we lost some along the way, but that's what makes us so strong is that we have volunteers, we have networks, we have partners, we have agencies. We have all of these folks that care so deeply about the people of Lake County. And we can't, this is not something that, you know, one agency or government can handle alone. We've known that for a long time. We've known that through everything that we've been through in the last 10 years with all the disasters. It takes all of us working together and it also takes the community. It takes volunteers, it takes donations. It's, it takes a lot to look out for the people that live here. So thank every, thank you, everyone, deeply, from the bottom of my heart.
I will totally second that. Thank you to all of our partners in stepping up today to really give us a better and a clearer picture of how this will impact the people of Lake County. And I do think now more than ever, it's a time for us all to look out for our neighbors, especially if all of these, these cuts roll down from the federal level. The thing we'll be left with is taking care of our neighbors, perhaps.
Your brother's body.
So I appreciate the presentation. Unfortunately, what's said today could be completely different tomorrow. It's very chaotic. It's on and off, on, litigated against, paused, frozen. It's hard to- It's hard to track exactly where we are and what's going on. I know I get emails sometimes in the morning and I make a statement a little bit later on, oops, I didn't check my email 10 minutes ago, it's back. It's just, it's, it's, I've never seen anything like this. I think most people, I mean, we talked to folks that are representing the entire nation and they have never seen this before. It's, it's, it's a mess. Appreciate all the work that everybody does. We have a community that has a lot of needs, unfortunately. Our poverty rate creates that, our lack of opportunities creates that. And there's a lot of work that's being done and it's good work and it's hard work. I'm going to say however, I've been seeing things that are coming across this board where I, I don't know how sustainable it is that what we are doing is, can be continued. I also wonder, and I'm not saying, so again, hard work, good work, but we are not progressing towards getting better. It's outside forces. We don't control the real estate market. We don't control the state budget. We don't control other things. So it's not us. I think we're working really hard trying to do the best we can with what we have, but the numbers are just not getting better. The system isn't working. And so one thing that I don't know, and it concerns me, I, I don't see this changing at this moment in time, maybe two years down the road, but for now, I don't think this is changing. And I know that today we're talking about the needs and the advocacy, but it also sounds like we are looking to continue as is, is what we would like to see. What's Plan B?
The reality is the cuts will be coming.
But, but what I, what I'm not seeing, and maybe it's being worked on, and, and I'm not hearing about that, but I know we're working on our budgets currently. And what is Plan B? How are we prioritizing different needs on what can be done to continue? Because we're, we're gonna have to eventually sit down and eventually look at prioritizing specific programs over other programs. And, and Lake County was pivotal in certain things that happened in Washington DC when we were over there for our NACO conference. We would love to see the support that's needed because the need is so grand. But I also, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing in the back of my head Supervisor Valenzuela from Siskiyou County saying we were so adamant about continuing what we wanted that we never prepared for Plan B.
I have Plan Bs, but I don't want to scare the people with what those Plan Bs are. I mean, I have the very, the best case scenario and like the worst case scenario, like how long can we survive with no federal funding? The answer is two months. Hopefully it does not come to that. I think a lot of, as you said, it's up in the air right now and until more things are solidly known, like the passing of the federal budget, it's difficult to plan for the unknowns. Part of that analysis will come from CWDA and CDSS and all of the state level entities that provide guidance to us with regard to priorities. For instance, if Medi-Cal loses funding, it's already on the state's radar that some of the optional programs that the state of California has elected to enact will probably go away. So that's coverage for non-citizens and expansion under the Affordable Care Act to increase the income limits for families. So we're talking about going back to classic Medi-Cal coverage, which is focused on the aged, blind, disabled, and to families with deprived children. That being a disabled parent, an absent parent, an unemployed parent, and there's a fourth one I'm forgetting because I haven't worked Medi-Cal in a very long time. But the parents themselves would not necessarily be eligible to the Medi-Cal coverage. Coverage only goes up for youth through age 21. So we're talking about a potential rollback of expansions depending on the level of cuts. So with the CalFresh program, they're talking about cuts to move the benefit levels back to the pre-pandemic levels, which are concerning given the rising cost of food, but that would be a potential impact if they're cutting the 230, I think it was billion from CalFresh. Another aspect is implementing work requirements, which CalFresh already has one, and you can have a waiver if you have a high unemployment level. California has that high unemployment level, so the work requirement for CalFresh has been waived in California. At the federal level, they're talking about implementing it just permanently, no waivers. For Medi-Cal, they are also talking about a work requirement, but I personally think that's more administrative churn than it is a benefit to the program because the majority of the folks already on Medi-Cal are working or they're elderly or disabled because of the expansions that have been implemented in the program. So we, you know, we're preparing for what the changes may look like, but until it actually rolls down, there's not a whole lot to do other than guess and have a few nebulous plans ready. Sorry.
And, and I, I appreciate that, and I know that you're working on some of those things, but eventually we need to have an understanding of what are the options and what's our strategic plan with those options to be prepared for those things. And I'm hoping that between now and June, that we can get some idea of what are the options that we're looking at because kind of like, just had some discussions about this because of an item later on our agenda, but training for emergencies prepares us for the emergency. I don't feel prepared for this upcoming potential emergency at this moment in time.
Totally willing to engage in those discussions more. It's, you know, I know what we can do with realignment versus what we can't. For instance, we can't throw realignment at actual CalFresh benefits issued to the public. Those have got to come through the state. I can use my realignment to pay for foster care if something happens with foster care and we need to bridge a gap. But realignment gets stretched further and further, the more we have to make those adjustments. And for me, foster care would be number one on the what are we going to pay list? Sorry. Got to keep those kids housed.
And with the way realignment is, at one point you are robbing Peter, robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Absolutely.
And it just takes away from other crucial programs that at least in the past we have prioritized. So I, I, I think that we're all serving the public. That's been stated quite often throughout this, this presentation. Sometimes we need to look within our structure and what, what changes can be done because there are a lot of similar agencies doing the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's not going to be popular, but maybe a way of consolidating those services under one roof is something that's going to help reduce the cost overall. So I think we have some potential ideas to, to move with, but we, we need to have hashed those out. And I think that the board should definitely have a better understanding of what those options are in order to figure out when this does fall, we're ready to pull it out because it's actually something that we've prepared for.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And I think analysis, at least on my end, from CWDA will be useful to that discussion. And I know other departments have other, like groups they're members of, like I'm also a member of NARO for Housing and Section Eight and Hood, who has weekly updates at the federal level that I'm having staff attend.
Well, and we have to be aware of everything. That's why we're having this discussion. We can't make a Plan B or a contingency plan without understanding the impacts across the board. And that's what we've been doing. I mean, we've been doing that with AAA since the beginning of the year. We've been doing that at NCO. We've been doing that with the food banks. Like we're trying to find the other ways because this, this is a reality that's happening, but we also have to figure out how no one gets left behind. And that's, that's the issue. We have to make sure no one is left behind. So we're doing all of these things, but this is just an, this is an overview of what's happening, you know? And it's the reality. So as we move, as we figure out, you know, more, learn more, our advocates learn more, we will learn more. But it's really hard right now to have a Plan B when everything is changing hourly. So we just, we have to know where we are to start.
Yeah, I mean, I could work some like if then scenarios out, but it's very, it's hard to guess if then. But as soon as we know enough to, to, to do that, I'm, I'm on it.
Thank you. And I, I think regardless, this is a, a good start at least to, to get in that direction to do all of what we're talking about, plan, keep an eye on it, you know, keep our hand on the pulse and whatnot so we can prepare contingencies and whatnot. And I have been seeing emails with those thoughts at least. We can't necessarily say this is it because we don't know, right? So, but at the same time, I think we all want the same thing to make sure we're ready in case things go forward from there. But, all right, well, thank you for this. Thank you for all your work, all of you very much. So I, we appreciate it. I know this is going to continue, but we're going to continue to put our best foot forward and keep an eye on, keep our eye on this. So thank you, and we're going to go ahead and go into a break.
Thank you.
All right. How long do you think? All right, welcome back. I know that it's around 11:45. Let's see if we can push through a couple of these before we take our lunch break. I think we could just, we'll start at 7.5. Consideration Award of the Construction Contract for the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Project Bid Number 24-39 to Argonaut Contractors, Inc., and authorize the chair to sign notice of award and execute the contract in the amount of $5,113,696.75 between County of Lake and Argonaut Constructors, Inc. for the construction of the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Director March.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall and members of the board. The county advertised the project for 16 miles of road rehabilitation in the Cobb Mountain area. The county received four bids ranging from 5.1 million to 6.7 million. Argonaut was the lowest, low, lowest responsible bidder. We're recommending that the board approve the contract. We should begin, if the board approves a contract, the contractor should begin working in four to six weeks.
We're good?
Yes.
Questions? You guys respond to?
Yeah, just a brief question on one timeline. Because I was reviewing our previous tenure plan, we're kind of pulling a little bit of a switcheroo on certain things, and I think it's already ready to go, let's move forward. But the tenure plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors. We're not exactly following the tenure plan. At what point do you plan to come back for us to review and reapprove whatever the new plan is? Because it feels awkward to have approved something that's not being followed and then approve a project that doesn't fit with what's not being followed. So just trying to make sure that we can come back to something that is made very public and open and understood as to what our actual plan is.
And I'll just add that I have no problem with it because the, the tenure plan basically usurped the five-year plan. And so like for me, I don't mind coming back and adjusting it. I could care less about the tenure plan. I'd rather go with another plan that includes everybody, but I hear you.
Just so that we have an understanding of what future years might be for the projects. Right now, we're just, we're, we're not following what was approved.
So later this spring, I'll be bringing a adoption of SB1 roads list that will lay out my short-term plan to, for spending on, over the next year and design. As you know, Scenario Two, which laid out the work plan, required us to spend approximately $12 million per year on road projects. And since we have not been able to identify the $12 million in funding, we will have an alternative plan and present to the board, a short-term plan.
Real quick, was the, the 10-year plan and the five-year plan, those were based on countywide PCI numbers? Do you know? Yeah?
It was based on the Pavement Index, Pavement Improvement Plan and their studies and created, but it swapped between the five-year plan where it went clockwise to going 10-year plan, which went counterclockwise.
Right.
Because I think the five-year plan started, I, I was just reviewing these things, it started in North Lakeport and then went around the North Shore and came back around. And then this 10-year plan starts in the, started at the Bottle Rock in Cobb and went counterclockwise back around towards the North Shore.
What I meant was when they did the study, it was based off of like an average for the whole county rather than targeting the actual PCIs in areas that, that are a lot more older, you know, lower PCI scores and whatnot. So like if there's an average, let's say hypothetically in an area that's like, has like a 40 or a, you know, 30, and then you use a 16, you know, you're, you're averaging that all, but you're not necessarily hitting the areas that need it most. You're just, and it seems to me as if that tenure plan was more concentrated on just, let's pick an area rather than let's focus on what's the worst or whatever the case may be. That's why I was like, you know?
Yeah, and that's exactly one of the reasons I'm looking for. Can we re-review just so that we can all be on the same page as to how, how we've decided what the plan is and why and where?
Glenn, sorry about that.
So you will note that in my future presentation, a lot of funding is, is, I intend to create a lot of shovel-ready projects so we can get more construction grants. Grant, grant agencies are really attractive to getting construction work completed as opposed to the lengthy period it takes to get design completed. So we're looking for additional funding opportunity to maximize our local funding.
Okay. All right, so with that, if there's no other questions, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this item? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Chair, I move that we award the construction contract for the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Project Bid Number 24-39 to Argonaut Contractors, Inc. Can I do it all in one? Separate?
Your voice is probably preferable to separate it up because one is the award and the other one is the signing.
I'll second that.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the chair to sign the notice of award and execute the contract in the amount of $5,113,696.75 between the County of Lake and Argonaut Contractors, Inc. for the construction of the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. With that, we will move on to the 7.6.
I just want to introduce Pablo Pentelion. He's the engineer responsible for it. And unfortunately, I did not wait for him to come down. So Pablo is our engineer responsible for the pavement rehabilitation project.
Sorry about that, I kind of rushed it. But Pablo, did you have anything you wanted to add or anything?
Thanks, Pablo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice to meet you.
So we will move on to our 7.6. Did you have anything? I see you turned your, okay. 7.6, Consideration of Amendment Six in the amount of $625,700 for a not, total not-to-exceed amount of $3,521,213.31 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Consor for final design and right-of-way services for the South Main Street and Soda Bay Corridor improvements, and authorize the chair to execute the amendment. Director March.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and this and board. This contract amendment is to finalize the design and right-of-way and environmental documents for the project. The project has a delivery deadline of October of this year. That's what we are shooting for, and that will require us to complete the design, the environmental recertification, and the right-of-way certification. We have right-of-way to acquire, and that is our biggest barrier to complete the project, to complete the design. We will actively pursue the right-of-way acquisition as soon as this amendment is, is signed. And I want to make as this amendment is, is signed. And I want to make a correction on the document. Um, this is amendment seven.
Oh, really?
Well, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Uh, just, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, just to confirm, so with the completion of this, that would put us in a situation be ready to go with that project other than finishing the right-of-way acquisition.
So we will complete a right-of-way acquisition, um, before October.
Okay. So that'll all be done as well?
Yes. So we need to, um, have the project ready to list or ready to advertise by October so we meet a CTC deadline.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatie?
And, and I know I asked some questions, um, via email and I appreciated the response that I, um, got, but just in thinking of our, um, it, it's a different project, but the Middle Creek project where we've been trying to acquire properties, kind of similar to, uh, you trying to acquire portion of properties. Uh, do you have any, uh, knowledge of any non-willing sellers who are not going to be willing to, um, sell a piece of their property for this project, which would force you to take a different measure, uh, to get those, uh, properties in hand to be able to do this project?
So last time we approached homeowners or partial owners, there were a few reluctant sellers, but I think that this is an important project to the county and, um, I think they will become willing sellers. So the alternative is, um, the eminent domain process and, uh, we will work with the sellers in order to reach an agreement without go, or my intent is to work with this, the, uh, partial owners to acquire the property without that process or without, um, finalizing that process.
And, uh, part of the reason I ask is we just kind of got a little bit of an education at the Middle Creek Committee yesterday that on average eminent domain can take 12 to 18 months. And so how much, uh, of our general fund or our HUDA tax or gas tax, whatever, is being utilized for this project, especially for this increase of 625,000?
Um, we have, uh, approximately, uh, $300,000 in right-of-way, so approximately $325,000.
But that's, is it grant funded or is it, uh, gas tax funded? Where is that money coming from?
Uh, I'm sorry, this amendment, uh, we have, um, a federal fund for right-of-way acquisition and we have for 300,000 approximately, and the remainder will be, um, HUDA funds. Or, um, call them nondiscretionary funds.
And if it gets spent and we don't meet the October deadline, um, then the HUDA funds, which is gas tax funds basically, that we would have spent on this project, this project kind of dies until we can find another $5 million to pay for it. I, I'm just, I'm concerned about the number of road issues we have, the tight deadline you have, some potential non-willing sellers and us using gas tax that could potentially be used on a different road on something that may just eventually be canceled or denied because of not meeting the deadline and that money disappearing. Uh, that, that gives me pause.
As an alternative source of funding, uh, staff applied for a $20 million, um, build grant. Uh, so, and we'll find, um, we'll be informed of if we receive the grant, uh, June 28th of this year.
Okay. And I, I appreciate you going out for grants. That, that's all I have.
All right. Did I open it up to the public? I think I did. If I didn't, I'm opening it up. None? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve amendment number seven in the amount of 625, 625,700 dollars for a total not to exceed amount of 3,521,213.31 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Consoor for final design and right-of-way services for the South Main Street and Sota Bay Road Corridor improvements and authorize the Chair to execute the amendment.
Second.
So, Lord.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, uh, as a, really as a housekeeping matter, um, in light of the change to the reference from amendment six to amendment seven, um, your board may want to, uh, approve the contract as amended with the following amendments that I've, um, identified and for your board's consideration. So the first amendment, uh, first amendment slash revision would be at the title of the document itself to change the reference to amendment six to amendment seven. Um, the second one would be on the first recital, which would be to add, uh, reference to quote unquote amendment six after the, uh, stated date of December 20, 2022 in that first recital. The third one, third change would be on the second recital where the reference to amendment six, uh, would be changed to amendment seven, to state amendment seven. And then the fourth and last change would be on page two where, uh, right before the phrase shall remain in full force in effect, it would be an added, uh, reference to quote unquote amendment six. So with that motion as amended incorporating those amendments.
So I'll amend my motion to that language.
I second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion, okay. My motion passes for one. All right. Um, next is 5.15. I'm going to bring that because you're right here and then we'll go on to the other, um, non-timed item. Uh, approve the supplemental service agreement number three in the amount of 218,700 dollars with NCE for the design of the Nice-Lucerne Cut-off Pavement Rehabilitation and authorize the Chair to execute, execute supplemental service agreement number three. And, uh, I, I pulled this, uh, Glenn, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to, you know, bring it out in the open because I know that there was a discussion in your last presentation about doing this work. Just wanted to emphasize that, you know, where we're at with it. That's all. Yeah.
Yeah. So this is one of the busiest roads in the county and I had a, made an error in the, the memo. So it's the east portion and if you commute the, um, Nice-Lucerne Cut-off, there's noticeable difference between the east portion and the west portion. So we're going to address the east portion. Um, as I said, it's an arterial road. It's one of the busiest roads in the county. Our other arterial road is Bottle Rock, which, uh, we intend to, um, pursue in the future. The reason why I'm bringing this forward now, uh, we had the opportunity to list the project on the STIP, uh, in August. So we want to, um, have shovel-ready plans so we can apply for the construction, uh, a grant for the construction work. So, um, you'll see that in the future. We'll use local funds to do designs where appropriate and we'll apply for, uh, grants for construction funding.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there any, uh, anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this? Anyone from Zoom? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
You want me to do it for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the supplemental service agreement number three in the amount of 218,700 dollars with NCE for the design of the Nice-Lucerne Cut-off Pavement Rehabilitation. Would, there was amendments in this. Did you say?
No.
No, that's one.
None is written.
Oh, okay. This one's fine. And authorize the Chair to execute supplemental service agreement number three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
So I just want to mention that, um, Water Resources, Public Services and DPW went out for a solicitation for grant writing consultants and we received 14 statement of qualifications this last week. So.
Excellent.
You should see some contracts for grant writing, um, coming forward in the near future.
Perfect.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
All right. We'll move on to item 7.7. Consideration of A, the Draft County Emergency Operations Plan, EOP, and B, direction to staff as needed with the plan to return on April 22nd, 2025 for approval. Looks like we have Sheriff Bingham here along with Leah Sotole.
Good afternoon, board. Sheriff Fink. Um, we're here with the Emergency Operations Plan for the county for your consideration and direction moving forward.
Probably need the microphone for.
Should probably talk in the microphone so everybody can hear me. So we're here with the, uh, Emergency Operations Plan for the county, um, for your consideration and direction moving forward for final approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my expert, Leah, for, uh, to go over the EOP.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, board. Leah Sotole, OES manager. Um, as it's already been stated, we've brought this draft to you, um, for your consideration and, um, I would just take a moment to note that the process for updating this or really rewriting it started in late 2023. Um, we've taken a lot of steps to engage county employees, the public, um, our op area agencies, and I think we've got a good product for you. So there have been a couple small revisions, just a couple words are here and there, um, since it, what, uh, we put it on the agenda. But other than that, we're here for your questions.
Supervisor Pisca? Or did you have something else to add?
I just wanted to add that just so that, um, everybody understands this is a living document. It's constantly going to be revised and revisited as things change, as processes change within CalOES, within the County of Lake and mitigation and, and threats arise within the county. We're going to constantly be updating this document as we go along. And we've put it out, like, uh, Leah said, to all of the stakeholders, the community for their input and, um, drafting this EOP.
All right. Thank you for that. Go ahead supervisor.
I just want to say great job. Um, this is a living document. It's going to be agile to, um, be able to adjust as, as things change. We know things change. They change all the time. And this was a massive effort and we reviewed it at the Disaster Council and lots of other places. So I just, I just want to say good job. Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you. That's all been Leah.
You're next, sir.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Spatie?
So, uh, I appreciate the, uh, communication about this. I know there were more than just some small changes as well. Wondering, uh, cause I don't see it on our attachments so that, uh, we're aware of what changes are happening. I know we're not approving anything today. Um, are, should the changes be stated right now so that we're aware of what changes were happening? Or do we wait until April 22nd when it comes back where then we have a re-review of it before final, uh, approval?
Yes. Cause with those changes, we're just, it's your direction at this time. If we want to wait longer, bring it back on the 22nd. Like I said, we've met the, the public comment side of thing and then give it your opportunity to get your feedback to it. We'll make those changes and then we'll bring a final revised version back on the 22nd for final approval and adoption.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
No, I just wanted to say good work. I followed, uh, you know, you being out there in the community and I appreciate all the outreach and, um, so great work. Uh, on the letter on Helen's name, I don't know if that's already taken care of.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then just one last question. I noticed that there's a few departments that hadn't signed this yet. Do we expect that would happen before it comes back?
We can make that effort. Um, what is there? I think three left. So definitely we'll make that effort to get them finished.
Okay. Um, thank you. I understand.
All right. Uh, we'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this item? More questions? Nope. Any on Zoom? All right. I'll bring it back to the board. Um, it's for direction.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, clarification may, uh, come from staff of whether or not at this point in time, the resolution would need to be adopted or if that is the request from staff or if it can wait until April 22nd.
I think we were, um, probably just would like to present all three of the documents for approval on the 22nd.
Okay. Yeah. So I think that's, uh, you have the direction you need and I think we're good from there. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Let's see here. Start from, we'll go to 7.2. Consideration of use of staff time in excess of eight hours on response to Potter Valley Project decommissioning. Um, and this is brought forward by Supervisor Spatie and I and, uh, staff and whatnot. So, um, I know that, um, one second. I know it's, uh, you know, so as you know, we've been, you know, dealing with the Potter Valley project for quite some time when it comes to the, this being brought forward to the FERC file, you know, the filing expectation in, uh, July. So, um, you, as we know, it lacks a lot of, um, consideration of impacts to Lake County. Luckily we have the SLR, uh, study, but also we would like for the, uh, staff of different departments and whatnot to have the opportunity to show and research how it affects them. And so that's why this was brought forward so we can have a collaborative approach when we make our comments to submit to FERC. And, um, I'll let Supervisor Spatie go from there.
And I'll even go further and say thank you to Matthew Rothstein for helping us put this on there. Um, and I think getting, uh, specific data and information from other department heads will be helpful in understanding the total impact that this can have. Uh, I, I wish I had thought of this prior to, uh, the submitting of the agenda item, uh, but I have concerns not in, uh, what we're doing, but just the, the, the vague excess of eight hours. And so what I'm hoping is maybe we can treat this similarly to an emergency proclamation where it has to come back to the board. We can report out to the board, say, here's what we've, uh, received. Here's what we, uh, are anticipating to continue doing. That way the board can be apprised of what kind of work is still left over, what kind of hours has been, uh, used up so that, uh, we can continue to keep you up to date on that. Uh, and obviously if the board feels that things aren't going in the direction that we were intending to go, or if there's an absolute excessive amount of hours being spent, uh, I just think that it's good for any of these that are requesting in excess of eight hours to, uh, be more transparent as to what is happening behind the scenes and, uh, allowing for a report of progress back to the board. And so hoping to do that, uh, maybe every 60 days, uh, or 45 days, uh, rather than every single month. Uh, just, I, I, it takes time and it takes work to get things on the agenda, uh, presentations to be prepared. Uh, so I don't want to do it too often to do more work, but at the same time, I think the board should be aware of what's happening. So I'd like to add that into that, um, approval process.
Susan?
I do have a recommendation with your, um, permission, Chair, is that maybe I have it a standing item quarterly report and in, in the event that we need to bring it back sooner, we just do so. Okay.
Works.
That works.
All right. All right. Matthew, did you have anything to add? I know you did a lot of work on this, like Supervisor Spatie said. And we appreciate everything you do keeping us on the, uh, keeping this together and keeping it moving for us. So, all right. Anyone from the public? Nope. All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the use of staff time in excess of eight hours on response to Potter Valley Project decommissioning with a report out on a quarterly basis.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. We'll move on to 7.3. Consideration of amended East Region Town Hall bylaws, earth bylaws. Um, this is brought back from, uh, earlier timeframe, um, with the change for, to add another zip code and it looks like it's been done. So, um, if there's not anything else, that's, it's the same, just the zip code update. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amended earth bylaws.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Next, we have a, um, consideration of the following board appointments for the Central Region Town Hall. Uh, we have been without a position for quite some time here and, uh, since January, and we got an application from Mr. Jacob Blue. And so, um, I think he would be a good, uh, addition to this, uh, this, uh, municipal advisory committee and also we would have the opportunity to be full once again. So with that, I'll, uh, if there's any questions, uh, I'll open it up to the public. If there's any comments. All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, only if he shows up in his Spider-Man outfit, I approve Jacob Blue to the SURF Town Hall.
I second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries 500. And it looks like we have one more, right? Oh, no, two more. Sorry. Uh, we'll do the 7.8 consideration. It's an addendum. Uh, consideration of placing a child abuse prevention flag on the courthouse. And do I, who, Supervisor Spatie?
Yeah. It, um, felt like we did not give, um, the appropriate consensus. It was a good idea, uh, but also was not on the action and just wanted to make sure that we had this officially approved. I, I'm in favor of putting up the flag and it's for the whole month and so we're still in time.
All right.
in time.
All right. Any other comments? Open it up to the public for any discussion on this? Without that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the placing of a child abuse prevention flag on the courthouse for the month of April.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and we will now go to calendars. Anybody want to start?
I'm good.
Go ahead.
So I seem to have been adopted. I had a canine that suddenly started staying in my yard and now curled up in my house. So I'll be going to see our local vet just to check in, see if she's chipped, and if not, then start moving forward, making sure I do what I'm supposed to do with my new canine friend. But between that, I have APC tomorrow. I have, I'm really happy that we're putting this meeting together, an encampment resolution grant. We receive $1.5 million as a continuum of care, get people off the streets from their encampments, and we're putting a planning team together and doing that tomorrow in the afternoon. Then I have Judge's Breakfast on Thursday. I have COC Peer Learning Roundtable happening later on that day, meeting with some constituents on Friday. Our CSAC Child Care Working, we were just discussing the issues of childcare. CSAC is already working on that, and I'm part of that working group. And then I have the Counties for Economic Mobility through NACO later on, and my visit to the vet. And on Monday, so far, all I have is meeting with our CAO and getting ready for our supervisor meeting. That's all I got.
Can we ask the name of the new canine?
At this moment, since my dog's name is Apollo, that would be her sister, so it only is right to call her Athena, but right now, we're not naming, just in case we get too attached to a dog that we have to give back to someone else. Because it's the right thing to do, is to give him back.
Okay.
Let me see.
I've been working on roads and trying to get a log of the roads in District One that we're needing to put on the schedule to, for repairs. I have a meeting tomorrow with Julia Sullivan with the Resource Conservation District, and then constituents. On Thursday, we have Lower Lake Schoolhouse Museum meeting. I'm hoping to make that one. The Lake RE Rec Board meeting is on Thursday, and Middletown Town Hall meeting, and then some more road, some more documents and documenting the road conditions within our district. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Last Friday, there was a CPUC workshop at Twin Pine, and before the panel that I was on, there was a public safety panel, which Sheriff Bingham was a part of, and really gave some great insight from the public safety perspective of why we need to continue to have AT&amp;T's investment in landlines. We just do not have adequate cell coverage and redundancy and broadband for all of those other services to replace what we know is very solid. So the landline conversation went really well after the public safety panel, then I was on with other supervisors from rural counties. And it was the second workshop that I've done with the CPUC in the last few years, again, about maintaining the landline infrastructure for our folks in rural counties that need it. So that was last weekend, or last week. Tomorrow, I'm not sure how I'm getting through this day. I will not be able to make APC and LTA, but Vice Jerarasmason is going to cover for me because I have a call with Pro Tem McGuire. I also have, at the same time, a meeting for the Lake County Biomass Project, our monthly meeting, and then I have my NACO ELU call, and then there's the monthly check-in with NCO on home hardening. And then I'm going to have to miss my daughter being presented with Student of the Month, so I'm just going to give that right here, since I have to miss that at the school board, Middletown School Board meeting, because I'll be at the Big Valley Advisory Council. And on Thursday, Fire Safety Council, I have a meeting with Devin Thomas, which I think everyone else is probably getting them set up. Caltrans will be meeting with CalFire. It's a bogs forest around the Helleport, around projects, resiliency projects and hardening projects. And then we have Lake Rec in the afternoon. I'm going to be touring Friday, the Knottai Christian Academy, and I just wanted to put it out there also, that Saturday is the Children's Festival in Lakeport. And then, yeah, and then Monday, I just have my meeting with CAO, and then back on Tuesday.
Vice Chair. Thank you. Yes, last week, I attended the Lakeport City Council meeting. Also, I was guest speaker at Rotary. I talked about some of the projects the Board has recently approved, but mostly focused on letting them know about federal budget concerns to kind of get the word out in the community, and they seem to appreciate that. I've had several community project meetings with groups I'm involved in. I went out with Water Resources on some hitch work last week. I had a meeting with our new fire director. Had a COC meeting and executive committee meeting last week. Yesterday, I met with the leadership of the Student Council over at our Clearlake High School. I'll be going to the Fire Board tonight. They're going to reconsider whether or not to recommend another candidate before it comes back to us. I expect that to happen tonight, and then hope to have this on the agenda before the end of April, back to the Board for appointment. Tomorrow, Supervisor Pyska mentioned it, I'll cover APC and LTA, and then I have to get back here to Lakeport. I'm going to have office hours for two hours with a representative from Congressman Thompson's office over. We'll be doing that at Lakeport City Hall, available for the community to answer questions about the federal budget or any concerns locally in the county. BEVAC, Big Valley Advisory Council, I guess that's tomorrow night, too. And then Thursday, I plan to attend the National Crime Victim Week barbecue over at Victim Witness. I'm going to have a, be attending a Lakeport Unified School District, City of Lakeport Collaboration meeting towards the end of the week, and then I have the monthly Mental Health Advisory Board meeting over at the Circle of Native Minds, another meeting with the city regarding Community Council, and then Saturday, I'll be at the Children's Advocacy Festival in Lakeport. That's it.
And you were able to, who was able to attend Tango Mike Saturday?
Supervisor Pyska and myself.
How did it go? I wasn't able to make it. I had a family emergency over the weekend, so.
Thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing that up. I think it was a outstanding fundraising event for that organization. There was, I would estimate, a couple hundred people there. Every table was full, and the staff at Robinson was phenomenal in all of their service to that event. Couldn't have, I think, asked for a better setup. And the music was good, all of that. It was, they had a lot of great raffle prizes. It was outstanding.
Yeah, no, I'm really excited to know the fundraising effort and see if Ginny has, because I know that they're struggling because of, it used to be $5,000 per package, or not per party, yeah, per month. Now it's gone up somewhat, so I know that them fundraising is going to be a high, a high demand this year to get some of that out for them. So appreciate that you all went to that, and glad that that went forward. So as for my calendar, I don't know why it's not populating properly, but this Thursday is the LCRA. Is that, and are you going to be at that?
Yes.
Okay, good, then I, so I'm, I'm alternate, but I'm just making sure on that. I know tomorrow I have some meetings here in Lakeport. A lot of follow-up from different municipal advisory committees, and so I'll be doing a lot of that work here this week. Over the weekend, I'll be meeting with some constituents at a POA over in Clearlake Oaks in one of the areas of my district, and then I'll be back here Monday for our meeting with CAO. I know there's something, oh, SURF. SURF is the 14th Central Region Town Hall, so that'll be in Lucerne, of course, and then I'll be back here Tuesday with the Board Supervisor meeting. Did anyone forget anything?
I forgot a few things.
Okay.
I have grand jury coming up next week. And they don't pop up like I, where they're easy to really read. I also have a meeting with Alan Flora on Monday, and last week, towards the end of the week, there was a number of other things, including visiting, brainstorming with Glenn March about our road conditions and our future plan for our roads, and also some other constituents that I had visited with. Thank you.
With that, it's 12:20. Is there anything else that I forgot or anything else to add before? Because I think that covers the whole agenda, except for closed session. Should I just read that as we come out?
You can if.
Or should I read it now, and then just we'll go into it after? Okay.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, if I may, on the closed session items, staff is requesting to pull 8.3 to a later date.
Pull 8.3 to a later date? All right, so I'll read off the closed session items. We'll be going in, when we come back, we'll be going into closed session, and these are the items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Health Services Director. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Information Technology Director. 8.3, which will be pulled to a later date, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release. 8.4, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator Carlos Torres, County Negotiator Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Marino, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico, and Employee Organizations LCD, DAA, LCDS, ALCC, OALCE, ALCS, EA, and LCSMA. 8.5, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, FERC Proceeding Number P-77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.6, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity at All versus Lake County at All. With that, we will go to lunch and come back out of closed session. What's that?
1:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1:30. 1:30, I said 1 o'clock. 1:30, we will be back, so thank you, everyone, and we'll see you after lunch, or we will just go into closed session after lunch, and then that'll be it. Thanks.